Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special council meeting of the Boulder City Council. What's our date? August 27, 2019. Lynette, will you call the role?
Councilmember Brockett.
Present.
Carlisle.
Here.
Morzell.
She's here.
Nagel.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Here.
Young.
Present.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Great. Thank you all for being here. This is a special meeting, so there's not going to be any open comment. Instead, we're going to have a public hearing on three items, and they are hate crime amendments, gender-inclusive language amendments to the Boulder Code, and the pavilion renovation and Alpine-Balsam area draft plan. So those are the three topics. If you want to speak to them, please sign up over there. I'll note that we're also going to have, because we like meetings, we're going to have another special meeting tomorrow night, and that will be solely on the tobacco regulations and tax measures. Because we recently had a public hearing on that topic on August 13, we will not be taking public comment tomorrow night. But with that, we are going to start tonight with something special. So if Chief Testa would come up. So. It's on? Excellent. So everybody knows Police Chief Greg Testa, and he announced recently that he, well, he gave us a few months' notice that he was retiring. So tonight, we're going to honor him. And I'll just note that at the city, there's a lot of people coming and going. But some people, when they go, it's a much bigger deal, because they held up a much bigger part of the sky. And Chief Testa is one of those people. And it's hard to imagine that, he spent 36 years as a police officer, 32 of them here at our city. That's a whole lot of life's work that he has given to us and to all the residents who live here. And that's a pretty amazing gift that you've given. And I'd say that probably in a lot of ways, you've kind of grown up, or the city's grown up with you, or you've grown up with the city. And more than just being a public servant, I would say that you've made the city a better place. And you've done a lot of things under your leadership that have really helped the city to evolve. And I'm going to read a statement that talks about all of those. So bear with us. Declaration in honor of Police Chief Greg Testa. Last June, Police Chief Greg Testa announced that he would be retiring on September 3, 2019. The chief has served as a police officer for 36 years, the last 32 with the Boulder Police Department. After joining the Boulder Police as a patrol officer in 1987, he rose through the ranks, serving as detective, sergeant, commander, deputy chief, and interim chief, before being named Chief of Police on June 16, 2014. During his five years as Boulder's Chief of Police, Greg Testa led the Police Department in several important initiatives, including, and I warn you, this is a long list. Starting the Edge Co-Responder Program to support mental health needs on police calls, creating the Homeless Outreach Team, making the Boulder Police one of the first departments in Colorado to have officers carry NarCam, saving an estimated 15 lives so far, creating a professional standards review panel and ensuring selection of community members for the panel, making sure they're made outside of the Police Department, implementing Boulder's BodyWorn Camera Program, starting the Youth Explorer Program and launching a two-week annual summer police youth academy, developing a formal neighborhood area policing program and creating the Boulder Police mobile app for police news, and releasing the first comprehensive police stop data report. And I'll note that few cities are doing that. We're publishing our stop data and putting it out there to engender a public conversation, which is a bold thing to do. Can you hold that? During his decades of service, Chief Testa has led the community through periods of challenge and joy, from rallies and protests to the 1994 murder of a Boulder Police Officer that he investigated, to three presidential visits to Boulder, to reading to kids in the library, and organizing community soccer games. Chief Testa is widely recognized by leaders in the community as a person of character and skill. Boulder City Manager Jane Brodegham hailed him as a man of honor and integrity. Boulder County Sheriff Joe Pelley says that Chief Testa is unflappable. And former Boulder County District Attorney Stan Garnett said, "Testa is just the best kind of cop, a guy who wants to keep the community safe and to be fair."
Can we sit down, Garnett?
I'm not weighing in on that. Chief Testa himself is modest, placing the credit for his success with the members of the Police Department. Says Greg, "You've got to surround yourself with good people, and you have to trust them. You can't shy away from asking people for advice, you can't rush decisions, and the most important thing is to be patient." After he retires on September 3, Greg will have an opportunity to test that patience. He says he wants to spend that time getting better at fly fishing. So, for all these reasons, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado declares September 3, 2019, Chief Greg Testa Day, and we urge all members of our community to wish the chief well in his retirement.
I am really humbled. I've always called the mayor "mayor" out of respect, but, Zan, and you guys get to witness the chief, please, give him a hug to the mayor. Yeah, unflappable, wow. So, counsel, thank you so much for this declaration and for all you do, and I just appreciate you so much. I feel like we've worked together on so many different issues and different, you know, problems over the years, so thank you for that. Yeah, when I look, I'll make this short, but when I look back at 32 years with the city, boy, there really has been lots of change in our community, and what a great dynamic community we have. And I'm just so grateful and privileged, and what an honor it's been to be your police chief. And I thank Jane immensely for having confidence in me to appoint me to this position, and to work with city staff, Jane, and all city staff. And I have to specifically point out Jane and Tom, because we've worked on so many issues and problem-solved so many things, and it's been an honor to work with both of you. And I have the utmost respect for both of you, for your commitment to this committee, to this community, and your customer service values. Thank you so much. And lastly, I have to say what a great Police Department we have. The men and women of the Boulder Police Department work so hard every day, and they give so much, and it's just been an honor to be, to work with them and to be their police chief. And all of the accomplishments that the mayor read are definitely accurate, but they're not my accomplishments, they are the Police Department's accomplishments. And when she said that I've surrounded myself with good people, the one thing, when I look back at my time, the one thing that I have, I think, really excelled or done well in is being able to pick good people and put them in the right positions. And both deputy chiefs, Kerry Weinheimer and Kurt Johnson, are here tonight, and their leadership in the organization is what has led us to these accomplishments. And Mark Bliley, the union president here too, I have to acknowledge him. So, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
I got a heart, but, yes. Thank you, chief. And I also want to note that Councilmember Bob had a hand in penning that declaration, which I thought read very well. So, shout out to you. Okay. And with that, we'll launch into our first topic.
Your first public hearing is second reading of ordinance 8335, amending the municipal hate crimes ordinance.
Good evening. Kurt Fernhoffer, Director of Housing and Human Services. So this, there'll be two hearings and presentations tonight. Both of them will be given by Clay Fong, who oversees the Office of Human Rights and Community Relations for the city, and Janet Michaels, Senior Assistant to the City Attorney. If you want to start the...
Yeah, I'm not sure how to get this up on the screen. It's on my monitor. Do I need to hit something?
Press five.
Ah, got it. Okay.
So, in 2016, there was a community survey that was done, and that survey gave a lot of helpful information. It showed that we're a very welcoming community, but it also showed that we're not as equally welcoming to everyone, particularly people of color. And it really became a data point for us to look at what we need to do as a community to be more welcoming. So this survey was really a starting point for the work that we're going to be talking about tonight.
Okay. So this is just a brief overview of the structure of the presentation, and we'll just talk a little about some of the background, the community engagement, what it is that we propose to change, and a staff recommendation. Some of you may be aware that the Human Relations Commission last week did pass a motion to, for your consideration, about some additional language that we may wish to include in this. So I think one of the big questions, and I think that Kurt had kind of indicated, you know, why are we doing this? And I think a good reason for this is encapsulated by this quote from the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, Nikhil Manjkar, who's been very active and has been a great partner to work with on this initiative. And I think, you know, his words ring really true for me, and it's, "We have a need to take action at the city level to combat the rise of hate nationally, and to make our city safe for all people, where state and national hate crime policies are not strong and progressive enough." And I think if we use this sentiment as a starting point, it becomes very clear why it is that we're proposing what we're proposing. So there's two major issues or changes that we're looking at. One is this issue of mixed motive. And some of this might be reviewed, since we did discuss some of this a while back, but by way of reminder, you have an issue with a lot of statutory language, where if you don't specify that mixed motive offenses can be prosecuted as a hate crime, it can be very difficult, and that's been the experience of other jurisdictions, to move forward on a successful prosecution of that type of offense. So, an example of that might be, okay, there's a, you know, somebody in a tight Boulder parking lot crashes into somebody else, and while the initial incident was triggered by a collision, you may have, you know, some racial epithets being thrown about, and it can lead to an assault, and that's where you're looking at a mixed motive offense. And in some jurisdictions, they were hard to prosecute. Illinois was one example. And through a combination of case law and statutory change, they were able to address that head-on, and we're proposing to do something very similar by having language that specifically addresses mixed motive. The second piece, too, is that pertaining to religious practice. Current hate crimes language, you know, makes it very clear that if there's something that happens to a house of worship, like vandalism, broken windows, et cetera, that that is very clearly covered. The Human Relations Commission, though, is concerned with individuals that might be involved in religious practice outside of the confines of a house of worship. An example of this might be, you know, somebody going through their Muslim prayer, you know, outside of a mosque, and as well as folks who, through their clothing or their hair, you know, that marks them as part of following a particular religious belief, that we want to create protections for people outside of a house of worship, and people who, you know, may sort of have, as some might call it, the sort of uniform that would be consistent with their religious identity, and we would want to protect that. So what we're looking at in both these instances is really looking at developing a sense of clarity, clarity for who we're protecting and under what circumstances we are protecting. Community engagement, there's been a pretty long history on this, going back to 2017. Some of you may remember the Community Perceptions Assessment, the Related Open House. Another key milestone in this was the 2018 Community Speak Out, where many individuals came to the HRC, which had a specific January hearing on the types of incidences that we wish to address. This year, we've had public hearings, and this all kind of stemmed from our February council meeting where we were instructed to move forward on this. We had public hearings and have also been doing feedback through the HRC webpage. So there's been different avenues, because one concern was folks might not want to show up at a public meeting, so we would enable the opportunity to address these issues through an online mechanism. So, the summary. We expand the underlying number of offenses subject to enhanced sentencing. We add language to clarify the enhanced sentence in the mixed motive situation, and we add religious expression to the definition of bias-motivated crime and throughout the human rights ordinance, again, clarifying the scope of protection that we offer. This is the sort of staff recommendation here. We can see the motion language, essentially to amend the municipal hate crimes ordinance with updated sentence enhancement and related language changes and setting forth related details. We have two more, just quick slides, but to reflect the proposed changes that were voted on at last week's Human Relations Commission meeting. Essentially, unanimously voted in support of the inclusion of the definition of religious expression in this ordinance, and also called for a degree of specificity about what would be added to the definition, and this is going back to some of the religious expression pieces, so hair, head coverings and garments and other factors would be added to the definition. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Janet Michaels from the City Attorney's Office.
Yeah, thank you, counsel. The second, the first reading of this ordinance was passed, and there was new language added to it that included religious expression as a protected class. And since that time, on October 19, the Human Relations Commission had a meeting, and they have recommended additional changes to that language. Now, the City Attorney's Office doesn't take a position on whether this additional language should be adopted by the council, but if the council does choose to include it, the CAO has prepared language that's consistent with the intent of what the Human Relations Commission has recently recommended. The Human Relations Commission proposed adding language to the definition, and there is dais information, this you'll find on your green dais sheet. The HRC proposed adding language to the definition of religious expression, including head coverings of all kinds, hair, including uncut and unshorn hair. That language would be added to the rest of the definition that council passed on first reading. Federal guidance has referred to other expressions of religion related to grooming and to hair length and shaving and such, such as Rastafarian dreadlocks, Orthodox Jewish side locks, in addition to the uncut and unshorn hair that has been recommended by the Human Relations Commission. And that's the language, so language we proposed, if council wants to adopt a new amendment to broaden the language. So what we would do, and again, it's on your green dais sheet, is insert after the word garb, delete or, but you would insert head coverings of all kinds, hair, including shaving or hair-length observances. And we feel that that is a broader definition and that encompasses the concerns that the Human Relations Commission had expressed at their August 19 meeting.
And I'll also, just briefly, I think it's valuable for us to look at what the rationale was that was expressed by the HRC, and we can see that's actually consistent with what the City Attorney's Office has proposed. You know, the broadest piece, you know, we're looking at just to ensure minority religions and religious practices are understood in these protections. This may also augment jury instructions to jurors who may not be familiar with religious practices outside of their own. And then the last piece, and I think this is fairly critical, is that hair and head coverings are the two most prevalent examples of religious expression-based hate crimes experienced by the Boulder community, according to feedback to the HRC. So that concludes the formal part of the presentation.
Great. Thank you so much. Questions from counsel? So, just to be clear, it also includes garments?
It does.
Okay.
That's what's intended with religious garb.
Yeah, yeah. Garb, garments.
So, thank you for that. I'm just looking at the, trying to figure out the exact amendments that are being proposed, and it looks like my packet has 200 pages, and yours has had 203. Are you able to give it to us in kind of chapter and verse, what section?
Yes. On page 29 of the agenda packet?
Well, except I think my page numbers are different, so I'm looking for the numbers in the ordinance.
Ordinance number, thank you, ordinance number 8336.
Yep.
And on the second page of that ordinance, the definition of religious expression?
Uh huh.
I have gender discrimination.
8335 is the bias-motivated, thank you, that's a good clarification. 8335 is the bias-motivated, or the hate crimes ordinance, but the definitions for the change are included in 8336 because we've put all of our definitional changes in the Human Relations Ordinance. Another change that the Human Relations Commission recommended, that they proposed to City Council on the August 19 meeting, was in the hate crimes ordinance to have a cross-reference to the Human Relations Ordinance. So, the Human Relations Ordinance contains the definitions, and that's where the definition of religious expression would be amended, to be included. So in the hate crimes ordinance, what we would have is a new reference to cross-reference the definition of religious expression in the Human Relations Ordinance. And that's in your other dais sheet, excuse me. But the definition, maybe it'll help, currently, and what the City Council passed at first reading was this definition of religious expression. Religious expression means any external manifestation of a person's religious beliefs, including but not limited to attending worship services, praying, wearing religious garb or symbols, displaying religious objects, adhering to certain dietary rules, or refraining from certain activities. And then at the, again, at the August 19 meeting, Human Relations Commission voted to recommend to City Council to add additional language, and they had referenced uncut hair, unshorn hair, and City Attorney's Office proposes broadening that to hair, including shaving or hair-length observances, because that's going to cover more religious expression, and it's also recognized in federal guidance of anti-discrimination laws.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was helpful. Any other questions? All right, let's turn to the, oh, we wanted to invite up the Chair of the Human Relations Commission, if you wanted to speak, and then we'll go to the public hearing.
My name's Nikhil Manjkar. I'm the Chair of the Human Relations Commission. I guess just first off, I want to commend my fellow commissioners and commission and staff as a whole for all of the work we put into this. It's taken a long time. We were fairly thoughtful and always engaging with the community and being responsive to them in getting to this point where we have these specific modifications to the law. So, there's been a robust public engagement process, and not everyone who's on the commission now was even on the commission when we began this, and so just the fact that they were able to join in and take this up and see the importance of it is, speaks volumes of the quality of the commission and staff. What I would say about, I'm also signed up at public comment to speak, so I may speak from my personal experience at that time, but what we've seen as a commission, in particular since the 2016 election, it was only just a couple weeks after that, we had a monthly meeting in November of 2016. We usually don't have high attendance at the meetings, and we had something like 80 people. We had a packed house that night, and we had an unbelievable amount of public comment. And almost immediately after that election, we had CU students, Boulder community members from multiple faiths and minority groups talking about bias and hate incidents and hate crimes being committed against them, including having head coverings torn off, name-calling, incidents of vandalism. And so, in expanding these protections, I think it's important that, to recognize that we live in a very different time now than we did, say, in 2015, when it comes to bias and hate, nationally speaking and locally. bias and hate, nationally speaking and locally. And we need to push ahead and be innovative and adopt a different take in responsiveness to hate crimes, to be responsive to the new landscape, because as you saw in your memo, we had statistics showing that in Colorado, just in the past year, hate crimes have doubled in the state. And although we also have some statistics around the numbers of hate crimes locally in Boulder, we've actually had more instances of people reporting hate crimes to the Human Relations Commission than have been logged in statistics that have gone to police and through the DA's office as well. So, that's the second piece I just wanted to mention, is that in enacting these laws, responding to a troubling statistic, and something that I found deeply troubling, is that over, only half of all hate crimes get reported, and victims do not feel comfortable coming forward and reporting them. It's because people don't feel that their own, whether it's their own religious expression will be understood, that people will understand that, law enforcement, cities, people don't feel they'll be taken seriously, and they also feel that even if we have laws on the books, they won't be able to be prosecuted to the point of a conviction. I've followed many hate crime cases in Boulder over the past decade, and I've seen cases getting dropped, extremely difficult to prove because of motive, and I know we've talked about this before, but it needs to be repeated again. That's the most difficult aspect to prove in cases, and I think covering these mixed motive hate crimes, and specifically naming these forms of religious expression, head coverings, uncut hair, like you see I have as a Sikh, as an outward expression of my own faith, and what was named by the City Attorney's Office just now, those, naming those things is really important, because when, when people see that a council, and they see that a staff has named these things in the law, that builds confidence in them that someone understands me, someone has looked into these issues and knows what my religious expression is. Because as a victim, when you step in, and you report to the police, the last thing you want after you've been assaulted is to be trying to explain and educate people about who you are, your own identity and your own religious expression. So, enacting these changes, it's, the council is bridging that gap, so I think in terms of what the commission did, this is really solid, solid work, and if there's any other questions about what we're doing tonight, I'm happy to take questions.
I think it's pretty clear. Oh, we have one.
Nikhil, this looks really, really comprehensive, and I appreciate the change you made at the last minute as well. Were there any things that didn't make it in here that you guys debated, and you were, as you were being comprehensive, it looks like you were, and I can't think of anything myself, but were there any things that you considered putting in the ordinance, and then you didn't get a majority, or people just didn't feel like it was, it was reaching too far, or do you feel like this is where you all need to be?
This is where we all need to be, but to answer your question, we did look at a lot of things, particularly among protected classes, and we had some discussion, and staff and commissioner Lee's research around, looking at adding homelessness status, unhoused status to the law, and in working with the Anti-Defamation League and other groups, we found that those are not immutable characteristics, and you know, that housing status thing can change pretty quickly, and so it would be difficult to address in this law, but we did, in the interest of still wanting to protect it, we think vulnerable person statutes at the state level, and perhaps locally could be modified to, to address that, but that, so that's why that piece from the study session was not included.
Thanks.
Great. So, thank you, Nikhil, and thank you to the Human Relations Commission and staff for doing this hard work. You mentioned that 50% of crimes, hate crimes, go unreported. Is there data on the pass, on how the passage of ordinance such as this increased the reporting of such crimes?
I'm trying to think if we included that in the memo. I think when we found the statistic, it said only, I think it was 54% of hate crimes get reported and the rest go unreported, and that was over like a decade of research. And it may not have been in the memo, but we, we looked at reasoning why people might not come forward to report, so in terms of like some specific statistic, I can't off the top of my head name, name one, but in talking to people who've spoken to the commission about incidents, about why are you coming to us, why don't you go to the police, can we help you report to the police, those issues I raised about why people might not have confidence in, in things, in the prosecutability was something that came up, so at least in the context of what we're doing, we hope it will help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Erin?
Yeah, well, Nikhil, this isn't for you specifically, thank you so much for your work and for the, to the Human Relations Commission for your work on this. I just wanted to let everybody know that we are in receipt of a letter from Congressman Joe Nogus, supporting this effort on the Human Relations Commission behalf, on our behalf, and specifically for the inclusion of protecting religious expression and calling out head coverings and hair. So, just want to let everybody know about that, and thank you to Congressman Nogus for weighing in.
Yeah, I just want to thank Congressman Nogus, Iluka Bloom, in his office, and Jill Grino, who have taken an interest in this since the beginning, in fact, when Jill was on council, took an interest in it, so it's really nice of them.
Great. Why don't we go to the public hearing? Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Oh, okay then. Switching hats?
Yep, okay.
Or head coverings? You're first up, Nikhil.
Almost got away. So, my name is Nikhil Mankekal, I'm Chair of the Human Relations Commission. Now I will switch hats from answering questions on behalf of the commission to just speaking on behalf of myself. Hate crimes are an issue that motivated me to, to get involved in the first place in city government. I had not much connection to all of this, I didn't really know anything. I saw 15 people apply to the commission five, five years ago this month, actually, when I filled a vacancy, and I, I kind of, you know, I just, I didn't know why people believed in me, and I think the council at the time, and some of you who are now, saw something in me, and over time, as I've gotten to know staff and council, it's made me more comfortable talking about some of my own experiences involving bias and hate, and in terms of the importance I placed on inclusion and having a welcoming community and what that looks like, especially in terms of, you know, from cultural events to like Indigenous Peoples' Day, to just this kind of deep level policy stuff that can be difficult. I've had my own experiences with bias and hate. I'm a native of Boulder. I grew up in the city, went through the Boulder Valley School System, graduate of CU, and I've made this place my home. I'm a second generation immigrant. My mom and dad moved here long ago, in the late 60s, 1970, or something like that. They're watching at home now. They've made this the home, and in taking up this law, I think if we pass these amendments, it will definitely make me personally feel more protected as an Indian Sikh. We have unfamiliar practices, like growing uncut, uncut hair, people have had coverings, and many people in my community, and friends, and people of other religions from South Asian descent, these laws will help protect them and make the community more safe. My whole life changed about a decade, about a decade ago, and I was attacked in a hate crime in my own home, home city and hometown, and the impact of that, of going through that, not even the crime itself, but just coming forward to report that to the, to the police, and cooperating and going through the system with the DA's office, and knowing what it is to go through the system as a victim, testifying, and what you go through was a totally new experience for me, and unless you've gone through it, you wouldn't really know. It made me get involved in wanting, in helping other victims after that, and in keeping track of other hate crimes. I watched them like a hawk in the community. Sorry, I keep pausing, if I could just have a few seconds, wanted to speak, but it made me watch these crimes over the past decade, which was, you know, I've mentioned before, and I was highly motivated in seeing when they got convictions and when they didn't, and what was the victim's experience in them. And I saw that mixed motive piece coming up, and everyone said motive's the difficult thing, and you can't really change it or do anything about it, and I just think we found a way to do it with this law. And after I, it took, I went through all of the things I named as a victim, difficulty in, in coming forward, and why I was part of that, you know, outside of that 54% that didn't come forward to report them. And I know what it took in me to be able to come forward and speak out, and I also know the retaliation and impact that happened to me after that. And I lost everything in my life, every relationship, everything I had, and I didn't think that there was any way that I could come back from that. It just, I didn't feel the community supported me, I didn't have anyone to back me, and I didn't know how it was going to happen, but I just had faith that I'd be guided someday to do something about that and make sure that nobody goes through what I go through, that I could do something to help with it. And in coming, in, in being appointed to this commission, and in being given a chance, and with the relationships and friendships I've built with all of you and staff, that became my community and my family, and, and made me feel I could speak out today about this, and talk with all of you about this, and, and invest the time and energy into changing this law. So, what we're doing is really important, and we all live in bubbles, and we don't often mix with people different premise, but a colleague and friend to all of you, like me, you may not have known that these things impact me, and people think they don't happen in Boulder, but just because it's not happening to you, that doesn't mean it's not happening. So, changing this law and doing this is a big deal, and the council's support and what all of you are doing is really, means a lot to me.
Thank you, Nikhil. Lisa?
Nikhil, and thank you for your courage and strength to come forward. I know how much, how hard that is, but I want to say, I remember the night that you interviewed, and I remember you telling us some of your, not to this extent, but some of your harrowing stories, and you were the best candidate, and I just can't thank you enough for sharing your story, and also just putting your mouth where your words are, or, you know, walking your talk, and putting the amount of effort you have into this Human Relations Commission and into these ordinances. And I think this council cannot thank you enough, because you've shown some incredible leadership, and I just want to thank you, and thank you for coming forward tonight, and just, your statement has been incredibly courageous, and I hope it gives light to others in the community, so, thank you, Nikhil.
Thank you, Lisa, so do I.
May I say something? We had a little mix-up on our sheets, but this is the correct list now for this public hearing.
Wow. Okay. Well, then, Christopher Lundee, if you would come up, and if Sarah Jane Cohen can Sorry, it's not very tall-friendly.
It's never really quite high enough for me. Thanks, Nikhil. I listen to Kej, I listen to his radio program now.
Could you introduce yourself, sir?
Christopher Lundee.
Excellent, thank you.
I'm not going to have nearly enough time to kind of touch on the subject, but I just heard it announced, the program tonight, so I'm not a big advocate, or I haven't been involved in this process, we're on hate crime, so I'm just sharing really briefly. My limited experience is that both my younger brother and myself were special ed kids, disability kids, and so it kind of goes without saying, there was a lot of discrimination and all, it wasn't quite like the TV show Welcome Back, Carter, growing up, but we're both born in North Africa Muslim countries, so I guess we're African-Americans, but we never had anything thrown at us against, anything thrown at us regarding that particular race or anything like that. But we do have a current problem with my dad, who is a senior up in Table Mesa, lives on Butler Circle, and been having a problem with a neighbor poisoning and killing animals and put them in our, in our backyard, and, and he kind of knows that, you know, there's terminalia, different type of bacterial diseases, there can be a problem, actually someone out in Lewisville, I think, died from mowing over a dead animal that he was carrying the disease, and I went to the cop shop and talked to an off-duty officer about it, and he was kind of, you know, it's kind of hearsay evidence, and not a whole lot we can do, and if they could put in security cameras or something, but anyway, so it's kind of a hate crime against my dad, number one, then of course, my younger brother, who's disabled, it was kind of, it's obviously a hate crime against him, of course, me as well, but, so anyways, I'm not quite sure what are opportunities or avenues to kind of maybe negate or stop that type of abuse going on, it's been going on for like two or three years now, so anyways, I was just hoping maybe, maybe get a little feedback from someone maybe here tonight, I don't know if it's that like an FBI kind of thing, or again, it's not serious enough, you know, hearsay type of thing, no proof. He actually, the neighbor, kind of a really clever individual, actually called animal control on us after pining the dead animals in our yard, and blamed it on our wood pile or something, but it was a very strange situation, so any, any assistance might be of value. Talked to the neighbors about it, and they're kind of aware of the gentleman, and, but again, you know, no one really kind of wants to get involved, I guess that's kind of often the case. I know in some countries, they have laws where, Good Samaritan laws, where if you don't get involved, it's actually a crime, so anyways, thank you much.
Thank you, sir. Maybe we can have staff follow up, I think we have your information.
I'm not so tall. My name is Sarah Jane Cohen, I live in Boulder, and I thank you for considering this really important ordinance. I am a member of the Anti-Defamation League Mountain States Regional Board, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the ADL. The ADL supports the revisions to the Municipal Hate Crimes Ordinance. ADL has drafted model legislation that 46 states with hate crimes laws have used to create their individual laws. ADL is really an expert in the field of hate crimes, and leads our state's Hate Crimes Coalition, called the Colorado Coalition Against Hate. This coalition includes Boulder County organizations, including among others, Out Boulder County. In the spring, ADL met with Boulder city staff and the Human Relations Commission with, excuse me, with Nikhil, to discuss and review potential cha, yes, it's true, to review potential changes to the municipal ordinance. We believe great care and intentionality was taken in drafting the proposed revisions. Many of the revisions closely mirror our model municipal hate crimes ordinance. ADL is very pleased that we were able to share our policy recommendations with the city, and to have many of those recommendations reflected in the proposed ordinance. Colorado has strong hate crime laws on the books, but as we continue to experience an increase in reported hate crimes locally and nationally, it's important to take proactive steps to plug the holes in the existing ordinances and legislation. Boulder's decision to revise and strengthen its hate crimes ordinance sends a strong message that the city will not tolerate targeted violence against marginalized populations, and will do what it can to ensure the city is a welcome and inclusive place. I thank the city staff, Nikhil, and the rest of the Human Relations Commission, past and present, council members, and the mayor for all your help, and we really appreciate that the city is, is taking this step. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah Jane. Oh, we have a question.
Well, not a question, but Sarah Jane, I just wanted to thank you for coming to stand and representing the ADL, because obviously the opinion of the ADL is very valuable in matters such as this.
Their words.
Really appreciate you coming.
But also mine, so thank you.
Yeah, for sure. And Stan Dietz, and then Emma.
I'm Stan Dietz, I'm a member of the Human Relations Commission and a long-term resident of Boulder. I don't have a lot to add, you've heard a lot of the things that are here. The thing that has been the learning curve for me is to really hear directly how much pain exists in our, our city, how much is unreported. pain exists in our city, how much is unreported, how much goes on, how much fear people walk around with. And it has been just startling to me as I listen to individual stories, as I look at data as to what's taking place. And so I want to compliment everybody who's been working on this and your own selves for taking this seriously and taking it up. And I do also hope that you put as specific of language as you can in terms of religious expression. There are over 20 religions practiced in the city of Boulder. The attempt to even try to get straight how each of these views, their practice, and the importance of it is very difficult. And especially in a case of mixed motives at a site of a crime, to collect the kind of information, to make the kind of interviews that are needed, requires a lot of attentiveness to the importance of a particular religious expression to the individuals that are involved. And so I think it's very important to give as strong a guidance as possible and as much specificity as possible to help people both report and, of course, to gather the information that would be required for prosecution. Thank you again for taking this up.
Thank you. And Stan, are you, by being as specific as possible, have we captured it in the language that the attorney?
I think so. I think the attorney's office has been very helpful in both extending it and bringing it consistent with other practices and law that exists on it. And so I would be very supportive of that. And I do apologize myself for coming late with some of these amendments, but you listen to the community and things grow, as you know. And so you think you got it and there's always more. And so I really respect the attentiveness to figuring out what groups we're missing, what are the very specific things we need to add. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Emma?
Hi, my name is Emma Kading Sobramanian. I live on Spruce and Folsom here in Boulder. And we absolutely must do more to combat the rise of hate crimes. And I fully support the expanded protections in this ordinance and I thank all of you and the HRC for your work. Everyone should be able to feel safe and welcomed in this community. My only concern is the increased sentencing. Increased jail time for offenders is not, may not be a solution to the problem of hate crimes, but may actually increase their prevalence and extremity. A better alternative may be to require that restorative justice be offered to the victim as an alternative. I understand that some victims may feel re-traumatized and wish to opt out and that should be their right. However, by requiring that the judge allow restorative justice, it could provide victims with an opportunity and means to get restitution and closure, which prison time would not allow. Prison is also often the cause of, not the solution, to radicalization. The Anti-Defamation League, who I know that you've been working with, the Federation of American Scientists, and the United Nations have all noted that prisons are breeding grounds for extremism. The proposed ordinance mentions that increasing sentence length will send a powerful message to the community that local government is aware of and is working to protect potentially marginalized populations. The increased sentence may send that message, but I worry it may not actually protect those people. We must take these hate crimes incredibly seriously and we must make sure that the steps we take don't inadvertently make the problem worse. Thank you.
Thank you. So I think that's it for public comment. We will quote— well, you didn't sign up.
Can I not speak?
You can, but you know, let's go. You know this—
I didn't want to interrupt in front of people.
Okay, that's cool. Lynn, go ahead.
I was discriminated against at the West Senior Center for a program I was in.
Can you start, can you introduce yourself?
Bolder, Mountain Heights. And I was discriminated at the West Senior Center for my pro-Palestinian kind of stance and I'm half-Jewish myself. And I didn't get one word from the city council or from anyone that I sent my complaint about. I was thrown out of a program there called Circle Talk that's put on by the Jewish Family Service. And I'm just an average person here that was trying to go to this group for older adults. And when I wasn't on time, I was blamed that I had to be there for the first three sessions. And they don't, I found out afterwards, after I'd gone to court to an appeal, to appeal a suspension from the center for one month, I found out that there wasn't even a rule like that. I was never given the rule by the person, Kami, at Jewish Family Services. And now I find out there isn't even a rule. And I was blamed and told that I was thrown out of the program for that and that I was suspended from the West Senior Center for a month. So discrimination comes in many different forms. And just, and I feel now, like I can't speak out for Palestinian justice because it's not politically correct.
Thanks, Lynn. Okay, now we'll close the public hearing. I'll turn to you, Sam, but can I— no, go ahead. You go ahead.
So I'm willing to put a motion on. Do you want to?
I had a question or just the final speaker who spoke regarding restorative justice. And I just wanted clarification. That is the ability of the judge to—
You are correct. That is within the sentencing authority of the municipal court judge.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
And I'll just further note that she is a big fan, Linda Cook, is a big fan of restorative justice and would almost certainly offer that in preference to extend the jail time if everyone agreed to participate.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going, I'm going to put a motion on the table here. I move that council adopts ordinance AD 335, amending section 511 and 524 to amend the municipal hate crimes ordinance with updated sentence enhancement and related language changes and setting forth related details as amended on the yellow sheet in front of us.
Second.
And then I move that we adopt ordinance AD 336, amending section 1211, including adding a definition of the term discriminate, deleting some section D of 1213, amending section 12112, amending section—
I think that's the next one. The next ordinance.
I was going to do both.
Oh, we're going to do another presentation.
There's going to be another— Oh, got it.
Okay, so we'll stop with that first thing. We had a second. Did you want to say anything?
Well, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said much more eloquently than I can say it, that it is important to emphasize that we intend to welcome everyone into our community and when anyone is mistreated because of their race or their religion or any other inherent attribute, that it diminishes this all. And so I thank the Human Relation Commission and staff for bringing this forward.
Second.
Second.
Second. So I'll agree and this is an important step forward, but just as important is the hard work that we all need to do to begin to recognize and dismantle the systems and the structures that enable this kind of thing to happen. So I hope that we all begin to recognize those things and do that hard work as well.
And I'll just add my thanks to staff for navigating this process and being nimble and adaptive to Nikhil, for your leadership, to the HRC for holding the space for this. And I'll just note, the Anti-Defamation League has been helpful throughout the process and has offered to help with trainings as we evolve as a community and educate ourselves and the folks that have to enforce this. And we had some lovely email input, like from Rabbi Fred Green and others. And so I thank the community for weighing in. Anything else?
It's a roll call vote. I'm sorry, it's a show of hands vote.
Oh, I was like, okay, all of those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you all.
Just one other thing, just that Ms. Siegel mentioned testimony of discrimination against particular political views that she offered at city accommodations. I just wondered if the staff could follow up on that because, of course, people should, I think we all acknowledge that people can express whatever political views they want and that the way they're treated at city facilities would not vary based on that ideally, so.
And for that matter, the first gentleman seemed to have some process or some questions about how to proceed if somebody can follow up with him. I think he's back in the corner. That would probably be good. Okay.
Okay, second, next, the second reading of ordinance 8336, gender-inclusive language.
Okay, well, it'll be a kind of a similar structure to the previous on-sentence enhancements. One main difference with this is that this was a collaboration very much without Boulder, who came to us last summer with a fairly comprehensive listing of proposed changes. And part of the background with all of this is going through some of the old files, 1999 seemed to be when this last process started. And, you know, as many of us are aware, a lot has changed in the last 20 years and it really is kind of high time for an update to language in statutes and some of the other city documents that feed off of those statutes. So here are some of the rationales for the changes that we're looking at today is that we have a language that really sort of reflects an outmoded thought that, you know, now we look at gender identity as being something more of the mind than in the body. And I think some of our older language doesn't reflect that. There's also issues where there's been sort of invasions of privacy, some of the old language made for things that could be rather intrusive and disrespectful of one's privacy. And that there are a lot of issues around healthcare, particularly faced by transgender individuals, that the old language is more of an impediment than a help in helping folks address some of those pieces. So there's quite a bit here in terms of changes. So primarily, you know, we start from a baseline of amending some, you know, some of the key terms like gender identity and gender expression and then eliminating more outmoded terms such as gender variance. We had some language about gender presentation, which I believe, you know, the sort of the most challenging piece was one in which it said that people could only change their gender presentation according to somewhat arbitrary number on an annual basis. We're also looking at some exemptions with respect to gender variation and some pieces with regards to public accommodation and participation on sports team. And ultimately amendments to the human rights ordinance to address barriers to enforcement. Again, we did a fairly rigorous public engagement process that's been going on for almost exactly one year. Outboulder came to us at the HRC meeting in August and presented the current proposal, which really forms the nucleus of what we're talking about tonight. And again, we see that it was 20 years ago that we had done this the last time. We did have a live event. We solicited feedback at the Rainbow's Over Pearl event, which was a key part of the Pride Month celebrations and the Boulder Jewish Festival as well, which happened on the same weekend. And we also had a mechanism for online feedback on the BeHerd Boulder website. And we also had public hearings at the last two HRC meetings, except we didn't, we didn't do it in the August hearing. Generally speaking, the feedback was positive and supportive of the proposed changes. You did have some concerns from folks that maybe were rooted a bit more in the sort of old thinking, but I think, you know, it's safe to say that I'd say 95% of the comments were supportive of the changes that we're looking at. So here's the summary. We're getting rid of the old language that is offensive and outdated and we're also syncing up with state anti-discrimination laws because there had been a discrepancy with the verbiage we were using and that, that had been promoted by the state. One piece too is modifying an exemption for sex segregated housing for persons under age 25, so somebody can lawfully live in housing that aligns with their gender identity, although there are a few limited circumstances where that would not be the case. This was probably one of the more pieces that we had to work on a bit more, but basically the bottom line is that we have an exemption, we have created a proposed language where an individual can be grouped with a sex group that aligns with their gender identity in competitive sports. Where this created a bit of a challenge though is that we may have some organizations, you know, one example might be the NCAA, NCAA, which may have regulations that conflict with this. So in this instance, what we would do is there would be an exemption for such organizations. We arrived at this conclusion in consultation with Outboulder and what we sort of landed on was that if we were to change, say, the NCAA's policy, that's probably something more appropriately done by a national campaign of persuasion rather than our local ordinances. So where did this all take place? And we've already had some stuff that was passed by statute last fall, but, you know, we're looking at changing definitions in the human rights ordinance to be more up to date. We're also going to change some of the language, particularly in the discrimination pieces. So, you know, that's the kind of three-legged stool of employment, housing, and public accommodation. We'll talk a little bit about the gender variance exemptions that we had just talked about in those other, in the previous slide, and then also some issues around the statute of limitations around this that need to be clarified. This will have probably, you know, it'll create some adjustments that we'll have to beyond the statute. So internal city documents, you know, one example that was given to us by Outboulder was the language within Human Relations Commission's handbook and departmental policies such as those pertaining to HR and others, and there may be other places as well. So here is the staff recommendation, reasonably complex. I won't read it aloud, but people can just sort of look at it from there.
Great, thank you very much, Chloe. I guess Nikhil, did you want to speak to this this year as well?
I could.
You don't have to. I mean, I make the offer.
Yes, I signed up at comment as well, but I can, I'll just do it now.
Okay.
No, so this, I just wanted to, this was done in close collaboration with Outboulder and we just want to thank them for assisting us along the way with these changes. And the commission as a whole has been, again, as with the hate crimes ordinance with this item, we've been all in it together and pretty unanimously supportive of it. And we've done quite a bit of investigation with the staff and just wanting to get this right. And, you know, along the way, I was just thinking, you know, some of the feedback I've gotten is, okay, we're really pushing, you know, pushing things ahead with this one. And while I do feel, you know, we're trying to stay ahead of things, we're also playing catch-up with some of this stuff too. And so I think it's about time we change some of this language as well. And just, I believe that it's really important that we, you know, as put my comments in the hate crimes ordinance that, just for me, I believe we should allow people to be themselves and to be themselves without being subject to offense, harassment, and even slights when you open up a handbook, we look at a law, seeing your identity named and recognized, there's something really meaningful to that and to Councilwoman Young's points about beyond laws and policy changes, looking at the broader, you know, how we interact as a broader community and dismantling systemic discrimination. I think when we look and see ourselves reflected in city government and law and policy, it's really meaningful and it helps create that sense of welcoming, welcomingness and inclusivity. And it's just important that people who, for a minority, whether it's religions or gender identities, things that people may not be familiar with and have difficulty understanding and engaging with, that leadership, as leadership, we all step up and make the best community we can and the most welcoming and safe community we can for all of these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Shall we go to public hearing? Okay, so we just, okay. Michael Duffy. And then, did I do that? See, there's a phonetic there, but I still blew it.
Mical. I haven't figured out how to write it phonetically yet. You can let me know. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Mical. I use the pronouns. I'm the education and program manager for Outboulder County and have been involved in this process. I'm also a resident of this area and a trans person, so this is personally important to me as well as through my role as an advocate for the community with Outboulder County. I just wanted to highlight that there are no federal protections like this. It's really important to have this at a local level. I want to echo what Nikhil said about how important it is to be reflected in the laws and ordinances to know that this is a safe place for trans people to exist and to be. There are high levels of discrimination that have real-world effects for trans folks related to educational access, related to housing discrimination. to educational access, related to housing discrimination, and just stability in life. And this has real-world implications, both mental health, physical health. And so ordinances like this can make impacts beyond what you might anticipate or expect. We do have a significant trans population here in Boulder. I can't tell you what percentage of our population is trans, but I do know anecdotally that we have a high rate, a high population of trans folks. And part of that is because of the work that Outboulder County does, but now also in turn it's part because of the work that the City of Boulder is doing in this area to be inclusive. And I do, we do have a community survey report, and I can provide that data for you following up if you would like to take a look at that. We did a survey last year on the experience of trans folks as well as lesbian, gay, bisexual, pan, rest of the letters of our community. This sort of protection is very validating for our community. I just, I really want to thank Clay and Nikhil, the whole HRC, for being amenable to this process we've gone through. I think a good process to figure out exactly how the language should be precisely worded to grant the most protections that are validating and have real-world implications that are not leaving out part of the trans population that might not have access to healthcare and requiring some of the, like, physical transitions that this outdated language has. So it really does expand and make it more robust, I would say. So I want to appreciate that. I think it's also great that this is happening at the same time as the Hate Crimes updates because our community is also definitely benefiting from that as well. So I also want to, while I'm up here, just say thank you for that and showing support for that as well. Thank you. And if there's any questions about this going forward, I've been a part of this process, so I'm happy to answer any questions, definitional or whatever that might be. Thanks.
That was pretty clear, but we definitely thank you and Outboulder for your assistance in bringing this to our attention. Aaron.
I just wanted to echo that. Mikel, I know how hard you worked personally on this and really appreciate your involvement in Outboulder's because I feel like we've got a really great ordinance in front of us and we couldn't have done it without you all. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Lynn Siegel.
Yeah, I support any transgender things. I was just trying to sign up for the Circle Talk group with the West Senior Center. And I tried to put in my gender and it said, "You have to put in your gender," and it won't let me put in my gender. So it's kind of like, it doesn't matter what you do, you're going to get discriminated against. But yeah, I support any effort in this regard to protect people.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to close the public hearing. Aaron.
Well, I would love to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 8336 that has a whole bunch of extra words after it. Just all of that.
Second. And that's including the information on the green colored sheet?
It does, right, because that was modified as well. Yes, thank you for that, with that amendment that's on the green sheet. So just, this is a really great step forward. I do appreciate the work in the community at Outboulder and Clay and your department worked really hard on this. It's much needed. Some of the language in our code, when you read it, is not just embarrassing but a shaming that we have that in our code. So I'm glad to take this step forward, hopefully that helps ensure that all of our community members can feel seen and treated fairly by their government.
Anything else? Anyone else? I just say amen. Okay, this is great. Hands, all those in favor. It is unanimous. Thank you so much to the HRC and to staff. Good work.
Your final public hearing for tonight is Item C related to Alpine-Balsam area plan.
How do you get up first? Should I get up? Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Colorful handouts. That's where everybody's been.
What time are you going to the vape shop tomorrow?
Eleven.
Eleven? So you're going with Aaron.
I'd rather go earlier. When does it open? They invited me at 11 with Aaron, but if you...
Well, so I can't go at 11.
Samira, are we ready to go?
Yeah.
All right. Hey, could everybody find a seat so we can get started? If anybody has an, excuse me, if anybody has an open seat next to them, can they raise their hand? We have some people that need to find seats. Excellent. Thank you all. Let us begin.
Chris Maschak, Assistant City Manager and Interim Planning Director will kick us off. Chris?
Great, thank you, Jean. Good evening, council members. Tonight, we're here to present two items, all related to the Alpine-Balsam area plan. So we're going to break this evening, as you have on your agendas, into kind of two presentations. First, we'll begin with Michelle Crane, who will give an overview of the facility's master plan and specifically how it relates to the pavilion building and the location of city services at the Alpine-Balsam site. We'll then take any clarifying questions specific to that issue. Then we'll have Jean Gottsa cover the Alpine-Balsam draft area plan and then have any clarifying questions from council before we open the public hearing. And then, once we conclude the public hearing, we have provided some kind of a suggested structure and questions for council to walk through the draft area plan and any questions related to the pavilion. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michelle to begin the presentation.
Good evening, council.
Can I just ask you to clarify one thing? Can you just, we talked at CAC about what we're deciding tonight and what we're not deciding tonight. Can you maybe give that to everybody out in the room?
Sure. So this evening, we are reviewing the draft of the Alpine-Balsam area plan. So tonight, council is not making any decisions but providing feedback. The planning board did the same and gave staff feedback. We'll take that feedback and revise to bring forward the final plan, the Alpine-Balsam area plan, that will be considered for adoption by both the planning board and the city council. That public hearing is scheduled for September 24th. So tonight's purpose is really to give us specific feedback on changes that you would like to see in the draft area plan before we bring back the final draft for adoption.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Michelle Crane, City Facilities Design and Construction Manager. And our purpose is to share some early work on our facility's master plan and it helps place a larger context around what the pavilion's opportunity is to provide city services at the Alpine-Balsam site. And so, again, we're here to provide information and look for feedback on both the pavilion and the facility's master plan. So the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan identifies that master plans establish detailed policies, priorities, service standards, facility and system needs for delivery of specific services and facilities provided by each department. Our master plan is, by contrast, trying to look at facilities as a collective and holistic system of delivering services to the community, not per service or per department. An individualized approach fails to really capture the common goals that can be achieved across all of our facilities. Our vision and our goal for the facility's master plan is to identify a vision for city buildings for the next 50 to 100 years and develop an implementation plan that will help guide us as we're replacing aging infrastructure and our buildings are adapting to a changing environment in ways that they have not in the past, and all while trying to maintain exceptional and uninterrupted delivery of our essential services to our community. The decisions we make each year in our annual capital investments last decades in our buildings. And so we want to chart a course that better capitalizes on these common goals and links to an investment strategy that we can implement through that annual budgeting process. And we do see consolidation of our buildings as a key to achieving these goals. So in our early work on our master plan, we have identified these six common areas of focus across all of our buildings. So first, we want our buildings to respond and address people's experience. We want them to be welcoming, inspiring places to deliver our essential services. And we also want them to be provided equitable and quality workspace for our staff. They should be functional. They should be efficient in our operations and maintenance, both within the buildings themselves but across the system, again, as a whole. They should be accessible from, again, around the city, but also then within the buildings themselves as they serve the diverse needs of all people. Pertaining to sustainability, we, of course, want to work on reducing our energy consumption and our carbon footprint, but we also want to include other principles of sustainability like water conservation and use of recycled materials in our buildings. Our buildings should have a good resiliency and a response. The infrastructure should support an immediate response to times of crisis, but also response and adapt to chronic stresses over time. And we want them to be fiscally responsible. So we're really looking to maximize the efficiency in our buildings in order to reduce our costs. And we have an aspirational funding goal to be able to implement this plan in a budget-neutral way over time. And I'll get to that in a little bit more detail in just a second about how we'll see savings to implement this plan. But again, consolidation of buildings would be a key to that success. So the last piece on just our facility's master plan is that it's really important to understand, we need to look at our buildings through two different lenses. We need to look in the urban context because, again, our buildings work as a network across the city in the way they deliver services to our community, in the way we work as staff between buildings, and in the way we operate and maintain buildings. And then we look at buildings specifically at the individual building level, so what you experience upon arrival and how they function within the buildings. For the purposes of tonight, we are focusing on that urban context as it relates to really addressing the question, is Alpine-Balsam a good place to deliver city services? And should we continue with renovation of the pavilion building, we would spend a lot more time in the design phases, really in that individual building level. So now, looking at the pavilion more specifically and Alpine-Balsam. We wanted to, for simplicity, boil this down into really three key factors of space, time, and money. So what makes Alpine-Balsam a good fit for city facilities? How is renovation of the pavilion a timely opportunity for us? And is renovating the pavilion a good investment? In February of this year, I presented to you how the pavilion building could consolidate three, possibly four, buildings into just this one. And that would accommodate roughly 250 to 300 staff in this building, depending on whether we added the fourth floor or that balance of amenities that we might provide. Tonight, again, the goal is to put this in the larger context of all 22 buildings that we could consider for consolidation through our facility's master plan. So on this slide are all those 22 buildings. And in orange are the services that are actually directly provided to the community from those buildings. And in blue are the departments and divisions that are actually in those buildings. And this collectively represents well more than $100 million in our building assets. So all those 22 buildings combined on that previous slide equal 420,000 gross square feet. We deliver our services through what we're going to, for simplicity, through two different types of buildings. So administrative-type buildings that really house our offices and most of our kind of customer desks, if you will, and then what we're calling land-intensive buildings, which are the ones that house, like, shop space and equipment storage, and then just very specific type uses. For the purpose of the discussion around Alpine-Balsam, we would not recommend or be looking at putting land-intensive uses up at that site. So we're focused on the administrative-type functions. But our master plan is looking at all of these buildings collectively. And so that's what we see here is the breakdown between those two types of uses. The carbon footprint on these collective buildings is about 4,300 metric tons, which is really equal to about 1,000 cars, just for some comparisons. And we spend just under $2 million a year operating and maintaining these buildings. And that does not include our backlog and it doesn't include our planned future infrastructure When we look at consolidating and what we could achieve by consolidating, each one of these bars gets more efficient. So we can reduce our gross square footage just out of the gates by about 20% by just not replicating so many spaces in so many different buildings. We can reduce our carbon footprint by up to 60%. And again, this is just in our administrative buildings. We'll continue to look at that reduction in those land-intensive buildings. Greening of the grid over time will reduce that an additional 30%, and this will help us achieve our climate commitment goals. And we can reduce our O&amp;M by about 30%. And we see an equal opportunity to reduce by another 30% those planned infrastructure improvements across all different buildings. When we consolidate, we can reduce those planned infrastructure improvements by about that other 30%. And it's in those areas that we see the savings to help fund implementation of this plan. So now, looking specifically at what Alpine-Balsam contributes to this equation, we estimate that we can provide about 60% of our administrative needs in our customer service desks at the Alpine-Balsam site between the pavilion and the Breton building. And so we also looked at our facilities, again, through this greater urban context. And when we did that, we called to mind the history of Boulder has of intentional planning and laying out of our city, from the structure of our urban layout that has created three main regional centers and our distribution of neighborhood centers. We should be equally as intentional as to how and where we present our city government and our services within the urban fabric. And so we spent some time just looking at this and focused on some basic but key elements to help best inform where city services should go. So first, we looked at where people actually live in the city. And so we aggregated all of the residential type uses, and those are all shown now in the yellow. And so you can see that the majority of people in the city live along the western side and in the south, with our higher densities along Broadway. Those orange and rust colors on the map reflect our commercial and industrial uses out centered towards the east. The Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan tells us that in the future, more people will live in this area, in the eastern area of town. So then we looked at just the major transportation corridors and how people move throughout the city, with Broadway being that major corridor along the western edge moving north-south, and then 119, 7, and 36 really bringing people in from the east to, again, the center of town. And there was a question from our last meeting about staff, city staff commuting. And of city staff who do live outside, which is a majority, they commute along those three major corridors in that pattern. And so intercepting folks coming from the east and out east in the future could be advantageous.
What percentage of staff is outside the city?
It fluctuates, and I've got to get a more solid number on exactly what that is. But it is a majority of those staff.
If you add the staff, it's like 95%.
It's 95% of staff who do commute from outside the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's not the total?
That's not the total. That's not 95% total city staff. It's of staff who live outside the community.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and so, which is still a majority, but that exact percentage fluctuates.
I'm on the wrong end.
So we were boiling this down, and what we have concluded is that Alpine-Balsam is a strategic location on the western side of town to continue to serve people where they live. Outside of the civic area itself, where we don't fit really down here for our services, Alpine-Balsam is in a very centralized location on this western side. And its proximity to this historic core preserves that strong connection between both the sites, and that can be further strengthened through our Broadway corridor. And that Broadway corridor makes this site quite accessible to our community along this edge of town. So our facility's master plan will continue to explore opportunities to consolidate other services out east and provide a complementary service hub. But implementation of anything out in the east would be on a much longer time horizon. major corridors in that pattern. And so intercepting folks coming from the east and out east in the future could be advantageous.
What percentage of staff is outside the city?
It fluctuates and I've got to get a more solid number on exactly what that is, but it is a majority of those staff.
If you add this up, it's like 95%.
It's 95% of staff who do commute from outside the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's not the total?
That's not the total. That's not 95% total city staff. It's of staff who live outside the community.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And so, which is still a majority, but that exact percentage fluctuates. So we're boiling this down and what we have concluded is that Alpine Balsam is a strategic location on the western side of town to continue to serve people where they live. Outside of the civic area itself, where we don't fit really down here for our services, Alpine Balsam is in a very centralized location on this western side. And its proximity to this historic core preserves that strong connection between both the sites and that can be further strengthened through our Broadway corridor. And that Broadway corridor makes this site quite accessible to our community along this edge of town. So our facilities master plan will continue to explore opportunities to consolidate other services out east and provide a complementary service hub. But implementation of anything out in the east would be on a much longer time horizon. So then the factor of time, and this is kind of simple but very important for us. We talked last time at our May 16 meeting, I believe, that we are more or less on borrowed time with Park Central and New Britain. And we need to vacate these buildings and have a plan to vacate these buildings soon. We also are interested in getting out of expensive lease space at Center Green. And the Pavilion is actually an opportunity right now to address these immediate needs, but it also addresses our longer-term needs of facilities. And so then we move on to the money side of the equation. And again, at our May 16 meeting, you council head requested that we better break down our cost estimates for what renovation would be. And so this graph here is going to help break those down a little further. We start with just a base construction cost in this range. And at this point, we have vetted this with sort of multiple sources who experienced with construction in the city. And this is a pretty agreed-upon average range for construction across the city. On top of that, as a percentage of those construction costs, you have design and professional fees, development fees, and contingencies. And then we have escalation. And this is where we have that biggest range and what potential escalation can be. And this is really, how much risk do we want to take and what the construction market will do? And depending on who you are, you determine to take varying levels of risk. Our estimates have been purposely conservative, but have been based on what we have seen in a pretty ever-increasing construction market.
Can you just explain the range? Is that per year, assuming a few years, that's the range? Or why, that's a huge range?
It is a huge range. And so depending, this is where we asked a number of people and we looked at our own cost estimating. And different people had different projections. It's a bit of like looking in the crystal ball. And it's how much you think that that construction market is going to escalate over the next couple of years. So we wouldn't actually go and bid this project and get a cost for two years. And so we're looking a bit into the crystal ball about what the market's going to do over that period of time. Our estimates have been based on what we've been seeing recently, which has been a pretty escalating market.
So that's just the escalation until we would, if we pursued a timeline till we get to actual construction?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep. And it is a compounding percentage as opposed to the items below or just a percentage of construction cost. This is a compounding percentage, which is where it gets that much bigger. So all of these costs would be in basically anybody, any developer's budget. And this is a range now of between $350 up to $500 a square foot, depending on where you land with escalation. The city has included in our kind of all-in budget, these additional elements. So we have to include fixtures, furniture, and equipment, which normally are passed on to a tenant from a developer in those costs. But in order for us to fully move into the building, we would need to include these. And we've also included the cost to go to net zero, so beyond our regulatory requirements to get our buildings to really be high-performing net zero buildings. So again, all of these costs would be included no matter where we develop in the city. If we chose a site though, outside of what we have currently at Alpine Balsam, we would also have to include land acquisition costs and parking. And so it's another advantage that we're taking, that we see at Alpine Balsam is that we have that 400-space parking structure to help offset and use for our parking needs. If we were to look elsewhere in the city, we would have to include those costs for associated parking as well.
Michelle, before you move on, maybe you could back up a little bit and paint a picture of what, I know we're deconstructing around the building, right?
Right.
And so maybe you could paint a little bit of a picture of what we're going to start with. In other words, these costs are based on what, what is the inside of the building going to look like? Are there some walls that have to build? Do we have HVAC? Do we have elevators? Like maybe describe what we're going to start with.
Yeah. So right now, as we proceed with deconstruction, that project's scope includes deconstructing the entire interior of the Pavilion. So really cleaning it back out to its concrete shell. And so we would need to rebuild all of our mechanical systems. We learned through our experience on the Breton Building. The costs associated with renovating that building just by repairing those two exterior walls that we're going to tear down are going to trigger us to have to meet our current energy codes, which really means when we investigated the mechanical systems, we're going to have to do a full replacement of those systems. So we're starting really from a base concrete structure.
So we look at this as we got the land and a little bit of vertical concrete and that's kind of about it?
We have the structure. And it's a concrete structure and so it's not insignificant. But yes, that is really what, we have land, we have parking, and we have a structure. Yep.
Okay.
So we've showed you this analysis before, but it's still relevant to understand the value of investing in renovation of the Pavilion versus spending money in lease space. Lease space is cheaper upfront. It's why people do it when there's a short-term scenario, when they're investigating something. But over time, we see that investing in an asset does end up avoiding costs. And in our analysis, over 50 years, we do end up avoiding about $100 million in costs when we go with renovation over that lease space. And the city is a long-term tenant with a presence here. So this is where we conclude this is a good investment. It also allows us to leverage this kind of asset as collateral as we look to advance other types of initiatives. So without this, we don't have those assets.
Another clarifying question, if I could jump in. This is, the lease costs are primarily the Center Green buildings, is that right?
These lease costs would presume if we had to lease an equal building. So it would, we're looking at needing to find lease space to vacate Park Central, New Britain. So this is presuming the lease costs that we currently hold at Center Green plus additional lease costs for Park Central, New Britain. Yes.
Just remind us again, our lease cost at Center Green is about a million a year?
About a million dollars a year.
Okay. And then you projected escalations over time?
Yeah. And then, so this carries that escalation of that lease rate over time. And we've just applied the same conditions to an equal lease for Park Central, New Britain.
Would it be comparable in size?
Which is pretty comparable in size, yeah.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
So boiling things back down to our summary, we bought this site in part to really address the needs of our city facilities. And as we continue to assess this site and this opportunity, we see it as a strategic location in town, very close to our civic core, that again, provides significant space to provide services where people live. And it's available right now to renovate. When considering the alternative to lease space, over the long term, we find this to be a good investment, cost-wise but also energy-wise in trying to achieve our energy The city has developed a funding strategy for the Pavilion, which we are going to present in the 2020 budget. Programming and design could be funded through, in 2021 and 2020 and 2021, using general fund capital dollars for a total of $2 million over those two years. In 2022, we would propose to issue debt for construction, which is currently estimated at about a $3 million annual payment. And this would be over about a 30-year lease term. By this time in 2022, that we would have refined those actual design decisions and talked about whether the fourth floor is in there. And this number would be refined based on current interest rates as well. So those things do get refined. After renovation though, we would be able to vacate the lease at Center Green and redirect that $1 million annually towards the repayment of this debt. And so this approach incorporates this existing expense or this expense using general fund capital dollars into the existing city budget. And it's not requiring newer additional funding. If we do not proceed with renovation of the Pavilion, we will be coming back with roughly an equal request to lease space to be able to vacate Park Central and New Britain. And we'll start lease payments on that and which will escalate over time. So in the moment, yeah.
Sir, are you estimating that it would be six years before we could move into the building?
It is roughly about a two-year design process. We'd have to go through a full site review. And so that site review, tech docs, takes about two years and roughly a two-year, probably a little less, construction time, but a little leeway in entitlements. So from the time we start, it's probably about a four, four-and-a-half-year process.
So could you run the design phase concurrently, like start it soon while the hospital's being deconstructed?
That would be the goal, is that we would start design.
Well, so that's four, four-and-a-half years, but you're talking about 2025 on that slide, which is six years.
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, this was looking ahead. If we could get in there sooner, you know, in 2024, somewhere in there, these are sort of rough timelines. By 2025, we could vacate that lease. Yeah. Sorry.
But maybe 2023 or 2024.
That might be a little optimistic, but yeah. Yeah. By 2025 would be, we would be able to redirect that payment. And, you know, we would be shooting for as soon as possible.
Okay. Thanks.
Michelle, I may have missed this in the memo, but what was the escalator rate for the lease rates?
Oh, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I could pull that back out for you. We based the escalation on what we're seeing at Center Green, which I believe is 3% annually. Yes, 3%. Yeah.
That's pretty good because my escalations have been higher than that. So just as a comparison.
Yeah. And I think, yeah.
So that's a conservative number.
Conservative.
On the $2 million that you're going to ask us to fund, I think in a few weeks, right, when we do the budget for the general fund, it sounds like some of that money will be used for design work, some will be used for entitlements, some will be maybe generic for how you create an office building, some might be specific to the city needs. If at the end of that period or somewhere in the middle of that period, whoever's on council at that point in time decides to go a different direction and they want to sell it as a, somebody else's office building, how much, how much of that $2 million could be recouped? I mean, the entitlements obviously would be because somebody's got to get the entitlements done, right? Do you have that?
The work that we do through the entitlement phase that could be valuable to somebody else. Anything that we do past that, and you know, roughly speaking, it's about a 50/50. It's about maybe a million, you know, in half the process towards that site review and entitlement phase. And then roughly half the process that really makes this a purpose-built building.
But even there though, presumably it's going to be an office building for somebody. It's either going to be office building for us or somebody else. So even presumably some of that second million could possibly be repurposed for somebody?
It's hard to say how much value somebody else could see is, you know, is you really, in that last phase, you get very specific about how mechanical systems are run to specific spaces.
Got it.
And that's the purpose-built part of that. And so it would be hard to say that that would be valuable. I think it's more clear that entitling the project would have a potential value that could in theory be recouped. And past that would be really hard to pinpoint.
Okay. Thanks.
So you mentioned that the building has to go through site review. Is that parcel two acres or is there another criterion that triggers the site review?
I think it's because of the height of the building.
Yeah.
And it's in a, it's in a site review right now. And so you would need to amend the present site review approval.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Keep going.
Okay. So in these last couple moments, we, I really just wanted to share with you at least an early vision that we have for the site and what we're thinking about city facilities up on the Alpine Balsam site. We do not want to start our vision here with replicating the office spaces that we have today. What if our buildings could be a place where our community shares innovation with our staff? And amazing things happen in places like this. We envision creating an interactive place in this building to promote positive and interactions between the cities and the community, in environments that inspire us through art and installations that speak to the innovative place that Boulder is and remind us of the great accomplishments of this city that put us on a world stage. We want to learn from things that we're already doing successfully. So meeting spaces like we see at the Boulder Public Library that every day are shared by both the community and the staff on that ground floor space, or the bridge that we commonly see our staff and our community sharing that space. We want to learn from what we did at Breton, where we took our worst energy performing building and turned it into one of our best and the first all-electric building in the city. We also created more welcoming spaces there and better staff workspaces. What if we could feel moments of joy in our buildings, like so many of us feel here living in Boulder, and inspire new conversations and a collaborative dialogue about the future of our city? We want to harness the nature of Boulder in our buildings. And these are the ideas and visions that we have for this site at this early stage and the goals that we're reaching for here. So with that, I hope this information has been helpful and for the discussion that we have planned for this evening and can take any more questions.
So we've been kind of asking as we go anymore? Go ahead, Mary.
So I have a couple more. Thank you for that presentation. At the beginning of the presentation, you mentioned that you were looking at 22 buildings. Is the facilities master plan limited to those 22 buildings?
No, the total facilities master plan is not limited. We want to look at all of our buildings and through those six core areas that we talked about. So our energy and our sustainability and our experience in those buildings. The 22 buildings or those that we've identified could be considered for consolidation, meaning that they aren't anchored to a specific geography in the city like a rec center is. It serves a specific area in the city. Those 22 buildings are scattered throughout in different areas and we could consider consolidating them and achieving those efficiencies.
So you're looking at all city-owned buildings throughout the whole city?
Yep.
Are you considering parcels as well? The city-owned land parcels?
We are not at the moment looking at parcels. But again, early in our master plan, and I think this is where there's sort of feedback. But right now, the focus is really on our facilities.
Okay. And the other thing that you mentioned in the presentation was customer desks. And I wanted to get an idea of the customers and what services there are that are being provided at those customer desks.
Yeah. So that map that I shared, I can put back up on the screen.
This one?
Yeah. We can go back to that.
Ah, okay.
Oops, sorry. Take a little bit to get back there. But those are the services. So we have a wide range of services that we provide, whoops, at those desks. Apologies it takes. There we go.
That one.
Yeah. So we're doing anything from building permits to helping install car seats to doing educational programs. We do domestic partnerships with our city clerk. We do bulk water stations we service. We help with CU at our fleet stations. So that's where we've looked at all those city services. And that's kind of the range of things that we're providing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sam and then Lisa.
Great. So I have two questions. One is about the fourth floor. So when we saw this plan a while ago, one of the things that was kind of surprising was that the fourth floor didn't have many employees in it. And the discussion then was around public interaction interface. And so at first, I was imagining that on the fourth floor, there was all this empty space. But instead, you would do that on the first floor, right? Would the first floor be kind of where the visions that you were putting out as far as the pictures and the interaction? And then you'd have employees likely service desks and so on, two, three, and four?
You know, all of those things is what we would like to explore through the design phases. And so early thoughts are the customer service desks in these areas and those spaces like the meeting space at the Boulder Public Library, we would offer on the first floor and try to have a very transparent first floor. But we also, you know, just in the back of the napkin, saw the opportunity to bring the community up to that top floor and share, you know, the amazing views and the opportunities up there as well. And so we thought, you know, there could be a blend of those things. But all of that is design work and things that we would get into in a lot more detail in the design phases.
Of course. I just wanted to hear back what you're thinking again. And then if you can go to the slide that shows the benefits of consolidation. I mean, this is a pretty powerful slide about what the savings are and so on. I was curious about, with the carbon savings, have you thought about putting a price on carbon and then thinking about what the, I mean, we have a, we have a climate goal, right? Climate commitment. And this would be a huge step forward in being able to meet that climate commitment from the city's standpoint. But there's also the component of there's economic value that we're told we should attribute to that. And so I don't know if as a city, you've given any thought to that. I don't need an answer right now. But it might be something that you consider, just like O&amp;M's cash that we save. You know, the value of the reduced carbon emissions is something that...
We have considered presenting what that is, as part of our facilities master plan and quantifying that. And really, it's a lot of that early work that we've done on trying to understand how our facilities will meet these climate commitment goals that really, without looking at consolidation, it won't be something that we can achieve. We just can't replace mechanical systems with a new, more energy-efficient model. We really have to look at some fairly aggressive measures.
And I will just note what we're hearing on that subject, that the going to net zero adder is about 5%. So it's really amazing what the technology is allowing these days as far as being able to achieve net zero in a big commercial building and increase the price 5% to do that.
Lisa.
So I'm back. I'm back on your slide entitled "The Urban Context." I'm back on your slide entitled "The Urban Context," and right now, you showed that a significant proportion of our staff come from northeast, east, or from US 36. So why not, why bring them all the way over to the west side of town, and why not? I'm just asking a question, and so I, we're not supposed to be clapping, it's just a question.
All right. That, this is where I give the little speech about no booing, no clapping, just so that everybody feels like this is a safe space to have whatever opinions they want. If you want to agree with something, do that. Thank you very much.
So, do you understand my question?
You're asking about...
Why not just start with the eastern edge or eastern side of town now, where real estate is maybe less expensive, where traffic is less congested?
Well, in relation to staff coming across, so we looked at this as relation in proportion to the number of people just coming in and out of Boulder, and we're talking, we have about 1,000 staff in total, and we have about 50,000 people coming in and out of Boulder each day. So when we really looked at the impact of staff moving across, it wasn't an enormous factor on that. It will be an advantage if we can intercept people further out east, but more importantly, what we were seeing and why we wanted to continue to provide services here are the two key reasons that this is where people live and are trying to access our services. And it also maintains that close proximity to here, the civic core, and so we, we don't think we're going to accomplish all of our needs on this western edge of town, so we will continue to look out east, to try to look at how consolidation, for the reasons in that slide, of the efficiencies we can achieve, that will be an opportunity there. But one, it has a much longer time horizon. There's a lot to do to try to even get there. It took us several years just to find a site, for instance, for Fire Station 3. It took us, you know, it'll take us more time even with sites we own to look at the redevelopment. The pavilion's an opportunity now, and we, we need to look at vacating two buildings that are on their last leg. So that, that's kind of, yeah.
So then, I'm just curious, at, we own property, a large parking lot on Canyon, and area that we had called the East Book End, what's happened with that?
The East Book End of the civic area?
Yeah, I mean, we own that property, so what's happened with that property in terms of its potential redevelopment?
So if council will recall, we talked about the East Book End, and originally, we were working on doing East Book End planning, parallel with Alpine-Balsam planning, and we had a check-in about Alpine-Balsam, then we had a check-in on the East Book End, and the direction that council gave us at that time was to not locate city services at the East Book End and focus at Alpine-Balsam. So we've put that planning effort on hold, and I think, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong on this, even if we were to look at the East Book End for city services, there is not enough space there to achieve all of the needs of city services, so there will always be multiple service hubs throughout the city, and as Michelle described, a key part is where we serve the community and where we then run other operations. So we always envisioned that there would be multiple service hubs, so the question is where should the one be that is near where people live, so that they can come and obtain those services?
Thank you, Chris. And then I had a question, you had mentioned something about escalation of costs over 30 years, and that we would be basically allocating something like $3 million for that. So what's the rate over time? So it's not just going to be 3 million times 30 years, right? What would be the, making it 90 million, what would be the total?
You mean the full debt service?
Yeah.
I don't have the full debt service number, actually, offhand, but I think, yeah, Cheryl from our finance department, I think.
Hi, Cheryl Patelley, CFO. These debt service, we used a 4% interest rate for the debt.
That's awful. And then my last question...
So I've got a follow-up for Cheryl. So a quick question, I assume that your department was involved in the net present value calculations?
We were.
Were presented? So what was the discount rate you used for the net present value?
I believe that we used 4% as well. We, we wanted typically in government, you use the same rate as what you can borrow at, so...
Okay, and isn't the discount rate in that case normally like the rate of inflation? Like what, what, you know, because you're inflating, you're looking into the future and saying, what are my dollars worth in 20 years from now, right? And they're worth less, so they're worth whatever, 60 cents in 20 years, but I thought you usually used an inflation rate as opposed to an interest rate for net present value.
It just depends on the situation, like a lot of companies would not use an inflation rate, they would use their cost of capital rate, so for, for us, I mean, we've always used our interest rate, but we certainly could run the numbers with the inflation rate, because that would change the numbers, because that's less than the 4%.
I just wanted to know what you had used, but that's interesting. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And then my last, my last question, this, no, thank you, Cheryl. This is to Michelle. So you prepared this, and this is a great graphic, I thank you for that, but you talk about we have 22 buildings. What are our future plans for those 22 buildings? What would we do with that?
That is the work that we're trying to do in our, our master plan. So we just kicked off our master plan in the beginning of the summer, and then we kind of focused our efforts on trying to help answer some of these questions, but it's really what we want to look at, is what would we do with these properties? How could monetizing some of these go towards, again, implementation of those goals, what are the properties? So that's what we want to keep looking at, and then come back to council with more information on.
So those could be, just to go a little deeper, those could be sold off to some other third interested party, or those properties could be used for housing or for other purposes?
That's precisely what we want to look at. Yes, they could be used for other purposes, yeah.
Okay, thank you. But on some of these, it appears they're not all equal, like maybe there's, like the municipal courts, we're not going to put housing in municipal court.
Right.
So that's going to stay a court, presumably, hopefully.
Well, that's a space that we lease, and so eventually, we'll have to get out of that space, and the county actually has plans to ultimately move out of that building, because it's in the high-hazard flood zone, so, but yeah, each one of these properties will take an assessment, and that's, and we've started to look at that, and some of them, you know, are more...
Well, some of them, it looks like there's certain uses, a subset, so like the main library, I presume will always stay a library, but there's some communications and Channel 8 that's there that could be moved.
That's right.
But the library will continue to be the library, right?
The library will continue, but a number of those properties are the whole building, but yeah, there's, for the majority of those, yeah.
Okay.
Remind me again, Michelle, the $58 million estimated for this renovation, does that include the additional floor?
That does, yes.
It does. So how many square feet would the building be with the additional floor?
Roughly 93,000 square feet.
93,000, okay. And if we look just to see what, you know, the market is out there for a 93,000-ish square foot building, I mean, not, not talking about building, a new building, but just like, are there 93,000 square foot buildings out there, and are there comps out there? And kind of best, back to Lisa's point about other parts of town?
Yeah, there's not a ton at 93,000 square feet, but it is something, we can come back, I know we've been asked about getting some comps for those, and so we need to look at some of that for an equal...
Yeah, I get the fact that they may, I mean, net zero, they may not have the beautiful artwork, we're talking about so on and so forth, I'm just kind of curious, you know, what is, what is, if it exists out there?
Yep.
You know, one or two buildings that add up to 93,000 feet, what, what does it go for, regardless of what part of town it's in?
Yep.
Okay, great, thanks.
Okay, shall we go to the next, part two of the presentation, because we have a lot of people that want to talk to us? So we're done with that? Yeah, for now. We can always ask questions afterwards.
Very good. Good evening, members of council. Our team is very happy to present the draft Alpine-Balsam area plan tonight. We have, okay, come on. We have a number of questions for the city council discussion to provide, we'd like to walk through these questions with the council to provide feedback, to outline any changes that you would like to see before the final public hearing and adoption in September and October. For the presentation, for the council and for the community members that are here, and those watching, I'm going to briefly address and try to do this as quickly as I can, there's a lot to cover. Why the area plan, how it'll be used, how it was developed, what actually does the plan say, our next steps, and then to outline the recommendations that our planning board members made. So starting at why the area plan, the purposes of area planning are described in our comprehensive plan primarily to bridge that gap between broad policies in the comp plan and site-specific project review and capital improvement planning, especially where there are significant opportunities in the area as there are in this area. The comprehensive plan outlines the purposes to clarify that desired future of the area of the city where changes are expected, and also to identify available achievable implementation methods. And so for Alpine-Balsam, it's really important to address the changing nature of the hospital site and the impact that has on the wider area, when this important community use has been there for over 90 years. Also, as Michelle described, to meet that, the, the need that is one of the key purposes for a purchase of the site with the renovation of the pavilion, to provide that centralized location for delivery of city services. Was also identified to meet the critical need for affordable housing within the city, and also as the identified neighborhood center, with our comp plan policy direction, that these important places in our, in our city provide that mix of uses that contribute to the walkable 15-minute neighborhoods. Alpine-Balsam also is a node in the central Broadway corridor framework, and we acknowledge with this plan the important role that this area plays for the nearby neighborhoods, outlining, and also outlining the opportunity for improvements along the corridor. The plan will be used to provide that common understanding of the expected changes and the desired characteristics. It will be used to inform the comp plan land use map, changes to that, as well as future zoning, and to guide site review for individual projects. The connections plan will be administered as a right-of-way plan and will improve, will inform capital improvements planning. After the area plan is adopted, staff will develop the implementation plan that will be shared with the planning board and the city council, and this will, work will include the deeper zoning assessment and focus on phasing and funding. How the plan was developed, so as you recall, we, after the city decided to purchase the property, we embarked on about a year-long process that resulted in the vision plan that laid out the wide aspirations for the, for the hospital redevelopment site. With, for the area plan, we started this, the area plan process, the area plan process early last year. There have been four phases of community engagement that have shaped the analysis and considerations for this plan. At each of these phases, when we checked in with the city council and the planning board, we have shared what we learned with the community members, and the council has provided direction to inform additional site analysis, the options development, as well as additional community engagement. As recently as our conversation in June, we, you reviewed draft components of the area plan and narrowed the options for community feedback. Since then, we held four open houses, two walking tours, an online questionnaire, meetings with property owners and community members. Key themes were similar to what we've heard in prior community engagement around the importance of housing, mixed use, the range of views in the community about density and building heights, and also access and mobility. What we heard shaped what you see in the final plan. So what the plan says, it includes, the draft plan includes each of these components, land use, urban design, historic preservation, connections, access and mobility, urban services, and implementation, next steps. As you recall, you saw drafts of these components in June, and what has, what you, from what you saw then, the draft plan has been refined and narrowed based on the community feedback and assessment, how to address all of the goals and objectives that we've laid out for the area plan. The draft plan describes a vision for the area, building on the adopted vision plan, analysis, community feedback, and direction from the decision-makers over the past year. It includes the unique nature of this area as a mixed-use neighborhood center close to the downtown that will be home for the new civic use, city and potentially county services, service centers replacing the Boulder Community Hospital. It will be a place for new housing woven into the fabric of an area that's already rich and diverse housing. This area offers an incredible opportunity to further the city's access and mobility, sustainability, and climate goals in ways that benefit the entire area as well as that The land use and urban design are the, really, the meat of the plan, the primary focus that lay out the future land uses and character of the area, and include a mix of civic, residential, retail, and mixed use, mixed uses that would allow both residential and commercial uses. What is recommended aims to balance many goals and address many concerns. These recommendations are based on longstanding policy direction from the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan for Sustainable Urban Form. Specifically, policy direction to seek opportunities to improve the balance of jobs and housing by encouraging new housing and mixed use in neighborhood centers close to where people work, encouraging transit and all, all mode access and mobility. The recommended land uses for the site balance the need for new housing with existing density and character for the area, acknowledging that the current site is home to a large hospital adjacent to a treasured retail center and neighborhood park, both single-family and multifamily housing, and a major transportation corridor. The land use plan proposes the most intensity where it has been at the neighborhood center core at Broadway and Alpine, decreasing from the core to transition to residential areas outside the plan boundary. The land use plan outlines land use designations and prototypes, and so I recognize that all of these planning terms are a little bit confusing to folks, so let me try to help with that. The plan outlines the uses and designations and prototypes that, in conjunction with all of that you see in the urban design section of the plan, will inform both the comprehensive plan, land use map, and the future zoning. We can either, we'll be doing that assessment to either apply existing zoning districts or create new ones that match the intent of what we're trying to achieve with this plan. And it may also, will also inform other design controls that could include form-based code or design guidelines, or some other tools that we decide, decide would actually best result in the outcomes for this area.
Jean, can you just, no, you're going right to it, never mind.
Yep, okay. So the land use prototypes, these don't reflect exactly what you see in the, in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan land use designations, because they offer that little bit more finer grain to be able to inform more specific zoning. So we will take these, we'll align them for the changes to the comp plan land use map, but also use them to either assign or create specific zoning to help achieve what's, what's described in each of these prototypes. This was similar to what was done in the Transit Village area plan, and how we took what was in those plans with prototypes into then zoning and form-based code and other design controls. So walking through, quickly walking through the recommended land uses. As we've just heard with the renovation of the pavilion and the Brenton building, the civic, civic uses at the corner of Alpine and Broadway in these areas, and potentially with that either/or for the parcel in the center block along Alpine. The residential uses are a wide range of these. The high-density residential 1 is proposed in, for most of the residential areas in the planning area. Much of this is already developed as high-density housing. New housing would be on the west block of the site, that would be in the form of town homes or small apartments with a three-story maximum, and within that existing 35-foot height limit. The high-density residential 2, which is three-story stacked flats, is proposed only in the center block, there in that northern portion along Balsam, and noting with this that there would be a significant setback from Balsam to accommodate the flood mitigation area on the northern portion of the site. Okay, I'll, I'll stay close to the microphone.
So I have a question here. Jean? This is Sam. It appears that High Density Residential 2 doesn't appear in the area plan draft itself, so unless I'm missing something, page 26, oh, page 26 is missing from our printout, so never mind.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
That's weird. Okay.
But just, you know, whenever somebody interrupts you, we've got to pile on. So that setback, the, what's the approximate anticipated size of that setback from?
You know, at this point, we've got, we've, we've estimated pretty conservatively at about 100 feet. You know, at this point, we've estimated pretty conservatively at about 100 feet because we don't know exactly. What we're going to do is, instead of doing a lot more of that site engineering at this point, we wanted to wait and do that along with the deconstruction and the next work with site grading, but it will be 100 feet or less, which is pretty significant.
Does anybody, about how wide is this room? I'm kind of eyeballing it, 80, 90, anybody know?
Five yards.
Yeah, anyway, so, big setback.
So, since I have a question too, so on the setback, would that have a detached sidewalk and, aren't you getting to that?
I am getting to that, okay. We've got some graphics in the plan that show both that section and the flood mitigation. Okay, so, high-density then residential three, the four-story at stacked flats apartments is proposed only on that center block, the middle southern section that could be the either-or housing or the four-story civic use should the county locate there, and I'll get to that more in a minute, too. So, with mixed use, this is proposed in select locations throughout the neighborhood center core along Broadway, and proposed within, along Broadway and in a few select areas just along north and Alpine.
And can you at some point clarify what it means to identify something versus whether we're identifying change happening or for the future, like make sure you cover that part.
Yep, I've got that. Okay, so, mixed use offers the opportunity for new housing in these areas, and it accommodates a range of non-residential and commercial uses as are existing today. It offers the opportunity to add housing should properties redevelop, and the photo here shows that mixed-use building on Broadway that when we held the small group workshops and talked about land uses in the area, folks thought this was an example of things that worked well in the area, and that's what would be a good example of what you might see in some of the mixed-use one areas. And, Mary, we understand there have been a lot of questions about what this means, especially for the retail centers, and we want to be clear, a change in land use and zoning does not require property owners to redevelop or to change buildings or uses. Changing from the community business that we see in the retail areas of this area to mixed use signals the intention that aligns with our comprehensive plan policy to allow and perhaps encourage some housing to occur along with these retail and commercial uses. The purpose for this is to be providing flexibility should markets change or needs change in the short-term or the long-term periods. This can provide that healthy intermingling of uses and contribute to that 15-minute neighborhood to meet many needs, the housing, retail, or employment in that relatively compact area. Additional ground floor, was there?
Keep going, then we have questions.
Additional ground floor retail and some housing could be allowed today under the community business land use or the BC zoning, and as we consider the future zoning, we can be specific to the needs of the different areas within these mixed-use areas. And for example, as noted in the urban design plan, certain building frontages are required in certain areas to provide the space for the active uses that contribute to that active pedestrian environment at the ground level.
Sam and then Mary by.
So, this is a land use change and not a zoning change that's being discussed, just to be clear and distinct about it. So, the land use change is kind of part of the math that comes in the comp plan, and then later zoning changes if we decide to do so. Specifically around housing, is any, is this change in land use change what could be built there, or does it just signal the intention of housing being desirable?
At this point, it doesn't change the zoning and what would be allowed, but we would be exploring that.
Right, but so, any action that we take by the end of September, if we adopt this area plan and we adopt a land use change, it does not materially change the types of building or the types of uses that can go in that location where the community plaza and Ideal Market are.
Not yet.
Right.
Not yet? You mean no?
It doesn't, it doesn't change the zoning.
It means no, yeah?
No, no, but it does signify an area of change, and so I think our typical process, if somebody wanted to take it through would be-
Lynn, stop that.
That they would concurrently request a comprehensive plan land use map change and a rezoning. Of course, that all anticipates that we put zoning in place that's going to be consistent with the vision that's identified in the plan, so I think that there's probably a number of steps that will have to take place before you would be able to rezone the property.
Right, and any rezoning that would occur, we wouldn't necessarily have to rezone the property, and any rezoning that we did, you know, would be potentially consistent with what's there now and what's allowed now. I mean, because housing is allowed as a use in-
In community business.
In community business now.
That's correct.
And so, if we were to change it to some kind of mixed-use zone, housing would still be allowed.
That's correct.
Okay, wait, there's a long queue here.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that we're clear, that this step that we would take this month would not necessarily change anything about what could arrive on the ground as far as housing and the way the housing is laid out.
Yeah, that's correct, and frankly, community business zoning, if my memory serves me, is essentially high-density, allows basically high-density residential to occur now.
Right, and so, that is part of the use table project that we're going through is combing through the use tables and looking at what we want where, that's part of the whole goal of that project, and so eventually we will get to both what zoning this property, those properties may have, as well as what could or could not be allowed in those zone districts. So, at any rate, just the changes that we would make to land use in this process would not be determinative as to what the zoning would be or what the uses allowed would be over time.
Okay, wait, 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 stop, stop, Mary is next. Then you, good lord.
If we're saying that currently in the business, community business zone, which these are already, we're allowing housing, why, I understand you're going off of the comp plan to say that this is what the comp plan is wanting to move forward to. If it already allows it, why are we making this land use shift? I mean, did the community ask for this? I mean, because I will say, this area is probably-
Wait, 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 we're doing clarifying questions.
Well, okay, so that's why I'm clarifying. I want to know why we're doing this because this is, from what I've heard, one of the most adored areas, so I think we're freaking people out because I'm freaked out.
Sure, so let me try and start to answer the question, and then I'll let others dive in as well. So, as a part of an area planning process, what you really want to describe is or layout is a guide for how you want change to occur in that area over time. And so, what we have in the comprehensive plan right now is a policy and some guiding principles about our neighborhood centers, and we spent a lot of time talking about that when we talked about some of our zoning changes related to BC one and BC two as well earlier this year. And what we talked about is that each neighborhood center is slightly unique, but we have a lot of really great neighborhood centers in this community. This neighborhood center is probably one of our best and one of our most cherished and one of our most successful. And so, when we draw this land use map in the area plan, what we're trying to show is the intent of the comprehensive plan, which is we want this to remain a neighborhood center, and we want it to, if it redevelops, to explore mixed use. So, we're signaling the intention that we already have in policy form in the comprehensive plan now in the area plan itself. And so, after this, the implementation steps are what we've talked about in a lot of our code changes, which is how do you make sure that you guide the redevelopment when property owners come forward for redevelopment of especially neighborhood centers, and make sure we don't lose the stuff we love, and that as that redevelopment occurs, that we make sure that it achieves the mixed-use vision that we have. And so, that's why we've indicated in the area plan that it would be a mixed-use area.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so we have Lisa, then Mary, then Bob, then Aaron. So, I have a clarifying question, and that is, my understanding on mixed use, where you have housing, it's not required to be affordable housing, in fact, we don't make it affordable housing, is that correct?
We would apply our inclusionary housing rules to whatever residential was built.
On mixed use?
On mixed use.
And same thing with CB?
Same thing with CB.
Okay, thank you. Mary.
So, to ask Sam's question kind of a different way, if somebody, if a property owner came in tomorrow, say the property owner for the Ideal Market Plaza, if they came in tomorrow, what could be built there now? What kind of proposal could they bring forward now? What would it include?
Well, it's hard to look into a crystal ball, but there is a lot of flexibility that's permitted by our site review process, so there would be, you know, they could propose underground parking and, you know, build something in the parking lot. I know that one of the important values in the site review criteria is historic preservation, and the plan does recognize that there is a historic preservation component associated with the Ideal Market property in the Colony Plaza as well. So, I think that those would be big factors that would be taken into consideration, you know, for whatever development proposal somebody would bring in, but BC zoning is a pretty flexible zoning district.
And as part of that site review that a property owner might come in for at this location is a height exception?
I don't believe that, and Chris, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I don't believe that this is one of the areas in the code where you can go above 35 feet. Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
It's not.
It's not.
It's not, unless, you know, there is a provision in the code that'll, you know, if you do 40% affordable housing, you can do it anywhere in town, but I think that that would probably, you would have to do that kind of a project to go over 35 feet.
Okay, Bob and then Aaron.
Because I'm still trying to understand the things that Mary and Mirabai asked, so let me just kind of back up. The kind of, I call it the light purple, or at least most of the light purple, where Ideal Market is and the community center and the shopping stuff, that's BC right now, is that correct?
That's correct.
And there's a proposal to change it to MU one, is that correct?
Yes.
Just on the land use designation, not a zoning change, I get that. And can you do a side-by-side comparison of what those two things are? Like, what does BC allow and what does MU allow? And why are we making the change? Because I still don't understand the reason for the change. Does MU allow things that BC doesn't, and we're trying to get those incremental things? Or what's the delta there?
Well, I think that primarily it's indicating the type of change that the community would want.
No.
The community business land use is frankly, it's not a particularly fine-grained or specific land use designation, so I-
So, for example, you could build what, I mean, explain that.
You could build housing, you could build retail, you can build office.
So, was MU more restrictive than BC? Are we ratcheting down the things that can go in? Are you saying the BC can do lots and MU can do little, less, or what's the difference?
I believe it would, the difference ultimately would come down to how you design the zoning to implement the plan, and I think that that could take shape in a variety of forms, and it would be done really, once the council and planning board adopts a plan, setting the objectives for the property, we would have to develop zoning that would implement that.
I have to say, we keep asking the question why, and I don't hear anybody telling us an answer.
Well, I'll invite staff to join me if they would care to, but I think that the primary thing is an indication that if there is redevelopment, that there'd be a residential component to it.
So, you can't do residential now, but you could do residential MU, is that what you're saying?
You could do it in both, but this is actually stating in a policy document that you, like, say you would prefer residential over office, or-
So, let me, you wanted to jump in, but I just want to make sure I'm on-
I'm due over here.
Okay.
So, I have a colloquy on this real quick. Do you want to go ahead, Aaron?
Well, yeah, I do actually, because my question is, you know, given the beloved nature of our two shopping centers here, could we consider, you know, having an area here that carried along a land use designation that paralleled with the current one is? Because I believe that is also a mixed-use zoning district, right? The BC is a mixed-use zoning district, so I just wonder if, would that be a possibility to, you know, have the area plan have those, you know, two shopping centers have a designation that shows that, hey, it's, you know, pretty much what you could allow right now?
It could remain community business. I think that, you know, as we've tried to describe, the intention is to set forth a future based on our comprehensive plan policy that allow, that directs, that should there be evolution in this area, the flexibility to be adding housing but maintaining those retail uses.
And just one more thing, I'll just remind us that we did change the rules on the BC zoning recently to require retail on the ground floor, which, I mean, does kind of go with the neighborhood center kind of feel. We can talk about it more when we deliberate, but just something to keep in mind about that the current zoning does have flexibility in certain ways.
I mean, I just want to mention again that land use designations are different than zoning. The zoning here, as Aaron points out, is BC two. There's actually three properties here, which I did not realize without looking it up, but the Colony Shopping Center is one, and then the Ideal Shopping Center is actually two different properties, all zoned BC two, so nothing that could happen would be able to not have retail on the ground floor. So, these neighborhood centers would always have to preserve retail on the ground floor under the BC two zoning, and I don't know that we would want to rezone out of the BC two zoning because that would be a very important component for this neighborhood center is to keep retail on the ground floor no matter what else gets built there.
So, I have a question, and see if I'm interpreting this right, because I think maybe a lot of unease is, we're not saying by this plan that we want the area to redevelop, but owners have a way of coming forward with development plans, and so if they ever did, that's what we're planning for, is that correct?
Yeah, that's a good way of putting it.
Okay, I just think it needs to be said, we don't want Ideal Market to change, but 10 years from now, they may come forward with a plan, and they may make it into something we don't want, so we're trying to say, hey, if they come forward, let's tell them what we'd like to see. I just think we need to say that, we love Ideal Market, okay?
Can I have a colloquy on that?
At least I think that's what I-
Okay, well, does change it to MU make it harder for somebody to make that change then? Is that what you're saying? It makes it harder for somebody to change it away from what it is right now? That's got to be yes or no, sorry.
Well, I think the answer would be, would be how you design the zoning to implement it, and that hasn't been done yet.
Okay, okay, hey, come on, people. Clearly, this is a point we need to iron out, and we got that. Go ahead, Aaron.
Because I totally get what you're saying, but I think it's also part of the challenge in discussing the area plan that we'll have to drill into is that these designations are, they're not even a land use, I mean, they're not a zoning district, they don't correspond to a particular zoning district. You're saying we might create new zoning districts, right, which might have all their own rules.
Yep.
So, there's an interest and an aspiration being expressed here, but there's no specificity, right? So, it's all still kind of a TBD sort of a thing, so I think that's what we have to kind of grapple with as we continue forward with adopting this area plan. I know there are a lot of people who are concerned about what could it be, but we actually haven't, we wouldn't be nailing that down.
Yeah, well, and then also to the extent that the council and the planning board wants to articulate what the vision is, that's the process we're in right now.
Exactly.
And, you know, we look forward to the direction that you give us so that, you know, when we take the next crank at the plan, that we can reflect what the planning board and the council values.
Okay, and I'll just add one more thing, which is, I'm pretty sure, I'll just speak as a layperson that didn't go through planning board, but I don't think the average person on the street understands the difference between land use and zoning, and I frankly am not sure I could articulate the distinctions that we are making right now, and that's one of the reasons why it's confusing-
Of course.
And also alarming, I think. So, I'm just going to throw that out there, we understand we need to keep bringing everybody along with this discussion. One more thing, and then we're going to go back to the presentation.
So, Mary had suggested that one of the ways that we make sure we get what we want in the, any redevelopment that comes forward, neither of these shopping centers, that the owners would propose, not us, is that there'd be some kind of form-based code, so to get a little even more geeky, you can kind of determine what the buildings will be shape-wise in a property, and so, one of the reasons that we might want- And so one of the reasons that we might want to come and look at zoning in the future in this location, and I don't know that it needs this land use change to do it, is because if we did form-based code in this area and put a new zoning district, we could more tightly control the outcomes. So not only requiring retail on the first floor, but dictating what the buildings look like and how close they have to be to the street. So you could prevent a redevelopment that has very wide-open terms allowed and create more tightly controlled, like where buildings are and what they look like. The point of all that is that if there's discussion of this going forward in the future of a rezoning, it would be in the context potentially of us being able to get better control over the potential changes rather than less control.
And I'll just add to that, the, one of the goals being for the form-based code would be to preserve what people really like about these shopping centers, which is the views that you can get. And, and that's something that, right now, we don't have any control or say. If they came in tomorrow, it could all just be 35-foot buildings with underground parking throughout the whole parking lot.
So I will say, throughout this process, we've had, you know, and folks have talked about ways to add housing in the area. There have been a lot of different ideas proposed, and we, you know, there's not been really any coalesce, anything that coalesced on any of these. The feedback from the planning board was that the reflection of mixed-use 1 in this area would allow potentially something cool to come in, if this were to be evaluated through the process, if something were to be proposed to evolve over time. But it doesn't provide so much intensity that it really incentivizes a significant change there.
So I'll ask another question is, is it conceivable that even with this land use change, you could keep the same zoning?
I think you could.
Okay, let's highlight this as an area that needs more discussion, but why don't you finish your presentation so we can get to the public?
All right. The mixed-use 2, so the, this is proposed in select areas of the neighborhood center core along Broadway, and proposed along that south side of Alpine. The northern portion of the city site on the east block is included in the mixed-use 2, really to represent this as that flex space, to be further defined as the facilities master plan work continues, and that may afford the opportunity for additional consolidation of city services, or it could be housing, or some other mixed-use with ground-floor non-residential uses and housing above. And also to note that that northern area would have the wide setback with the, for the flood conveyance. And the mixed-use 2 proposed on that south side of Alpine is to reflect similar building heights on both sides of Alpine, and as an appropriate place to focus potential intensity for more housing, to maximize that potential within the area. So what does this mean? There's been a lot of discussion about the number of, the potential for new housing. And so we know, we have some certainty about redevelopment of the site. We know that this is going to happen. The range of units with the, without the Boulder County location there is up to about 260 units. With the Boulder County on that lower portion of the center, center block, that would displace about 90 units, so then the upper, upper range. And that includes that flex parcel along Broadway, for up to about 170 units. Within that wider area, we have some broad assumptions. And again, as you, as you've discussed, this does not, we don't have control over those properties. We don't mandate redevelopment of those. But if you apply sort of a broad brush dwelling units per acre toward some of the non-residential areas that could go to mixed-use, there could be up to that 380 units in the area, some of which is allowed today, should some of those properties redevelop.
Can you pause there a second?
Yeah, let's just pause here, because I want to ask a clarifying question and make sure that it's as crystal clear as can be, that on the Alpine-Balsam property, staff is proposing that we look at 120 to 260 dwelling units. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's what the estimates for, related to these land uses.
Right, so, so there, there is no proposal on the table in this area plan that we look at more than 260 dwelling units on the Alpine-Balsam property that the city owns?
As proposed with these land uses.
Right, okay. And then the others that add up to that 640 big scary number, those are all private properties that we are not particularly planning specifically. They're governed by their current zoning and their current land use. And so those additional units that you have there, 250 to 380, that's just what the private landowners there could do under current land use and current zoning.
Over time.
Over time, so.
Yeah, I think we just can't explain that well enough, because it's, it's a large number. Okay. Yep.
Are you going to later on talk about where we are with the county, or are you going to?
Yep.
Okay, I'll leave it till then.
So we're discussing an area plan, and, and we keep hearing this is an overtime kind of thing. So to give an idea of what overtime means, could you discuss like other area plans and how long it's been for overtime to realize the visions expressed in the area plans?
Yeah, well, as, as many of you are aware, we, you know, the sub-community plan for North Boulder, we adopted about 20 years ago. And that's continuing to be implemented and for properties to come in and redevelop in, in, you know, in alignment with the vision that was set forth in that plan. The Transit Village area plan was adopted in 2007, and we've seen some parts of the, of the first phase of that plan taking shape of, in more recent years, over the 10, 12 years since that plan was adopted. There's another phase of that that's yet to be implemented, and that would, again, continue over probably the next decade or, or so.
So it's safe to say that overtime can mean decades?
I, it can, and one of the things that you can do in a plan, like Jean was mentioning with the Transit Village area plan, is you can have a time component of when you're thinking you, you want change to occur. And that's what we did with that plan. We said the, the area of change was basically the area of the railroad tracks that go through that area. And then there was some-
Speak into the mic, yeah.
Sorry, east of the, east of the railroad tracks, there was some initial planning done, but the implementation wasn't set to start until the council started it, and that hasn't occurred yet.
And that was set out in the area plan through phases?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay. All right. We are on to urban design. So the purpose of the urban design plan is, the purpose of the urban design plan is to guide the maintenance and improvement of the built environment and the public realm. It identifies aspects and features of the spaces between the buildings, how the places are experienced, and provides initial guidance for the design, character for future building. It describes objectives for these elements that are really necessary to achieve the high-quality built environment and public realm. It will guide any future design controls that might include the design guidelines or form-based codes, as you've, as you've mentioned, that would be identified as part of the implementation of the area plan. Key elements include streetscape and connections improvements, identifying where there would be ground-floor active uses, particularly along Broadway, locations for parks and open space, notably the New Plaza with the Pavilion renovation and the linear greenway for flood mitigation along Balsam. The urban design element also outlines the heights for future buildings, the mixed-use 1 and the high-density residential 2 areas in the green. They really speak to the community feedback that we heard about not wanting to see the buildings quite so boxy or cookie cutter, especially the mixed-use 2. Some of those uses need that little extra height to adequately accommodate the ground-floor non-residential uses. The plan has the historic preservation chapter that describes the eclectic character that it's evolved over time in this area, and recognizes that there are a number of buildings that appear to have potential historic and architectural significance. The area plan purpose is not to change any of the city processes or programs for preservation, but to highlight that this is an important characteristic of this area. The connections plan recommends a number of improvements that make getting around the area safer, more pleasant, and easier by all modes. It includes the new street connection through the site, new future connections that break up the block between Alpine and North, alley improvements, pedestrian improvements, transit stop improvements, and a mobility plaza or hub on the site. And there's a lot more recommended in the connections plan, but in the interest of time, I'm going to keep moving. The access and mobility strategy reflects the direction that we've discussed at several prior meetings, including, it's based on the vehicle trip reduction to meet transportation master plan and climate commitment goals, as well as being based on citywide parking and behavior data. Direction has consistently been, whoops, I'll keep going. Direct, consistently been to, to focus on all modes in a proactive strategy. The, the strategy elements include transportation demand management programs that encourage making, getting around without a car easier. As I mentioned, the transit improvements, parking reductions, and a parking strategy based on the SUMP, shared unbundled managed and paid principles, as well as a potential general improvement district to fund the programs and services. Another key element of the access and mobility strategy is to maximize the existing parking structure so that we invest in programs that further our adopted climate and access goals and not invest in constructing more parking. The urban services section includes an evaluation and provision of urban services provided in this area that is already fully developed. It recommends ways to mitigate any potential new impacts, but it also identifies opportunities such as adding arts and culture in the area. So the flood mitigation, as described in our last meeting, and this is the diagram that is included in the plan as well, where you can really see the, the significant amount of area dedicated from Balsam all the way through, that include a sidewalk and multi-use path.
Jean, just to be clear here, does this mean there are no planned changes in North Boulder Park as a result of this project?
That is correct.
Thank you.
So again, the, the wide greenway, it would be designed to carry the stormwater when there is water, but would be dry most of the time, and requires that significant setback with landscaping. So I just want to do a recap of this, of what's recommended for the city site, because I know that that is such a primary focus for folks. So on the east block, we have the renovation of the Medical Pavilion and the Breton Building with a new public plaza, and then also outlining the mixed-use for the flex space on the, on the northern portion of that. Within the center block-
Jean, can we ask about the, the flex space idea? So I guess I'm a little confused about that, because we're talking about consolidation of city offices and services in the Pavilion Building, and potentially a county partnership on the south side. Why a flex space rather than just housing with retail on the ground floor? Like, are we thinking about more city office space on the northeast corner?
It could very well be that. I think we just, we wanted to be, and we, we talked a lot about this in February when we came back with the board, as far as just not knowing exactly what those needs would be, whether it would be more city facilities on the ground level as, as in conjunction with the service center with housing above. But just to be able, the, instead of doing it public, the mixed-use allows for it to be any of those types of things.
I guess, yeah. And I know we talked about this before, but it's, it's kind of come another step or two since then. I just, I didn't hear anything from Michelle about, oh, and we might put some additional city offices here in the northeast corner, you know, when she's talking about the facility master plan.
Yeah. Right now, I think we knew that, again, we had been looking at preserving this flex space and letting our facilities master plan. As we pointed out, we know we haven't accommodated all of our city needs, but we're still evaluating that. And so as Jean mentioned, this just allows us the opportunity to keep assessing that and not sort of paint ourselves into a corner, but-
Well, we'll talk about it more later.
Well, and just to be clear, so flex space means it could be this or this, right? It doesn't mean it's going to be flexible once it's built. Go ahead.
And just to clarify, it doesn't mean that it's necessarily the county that would do the, the office part? It could be the city as well, or some other-
Correct. It's not enough space to meet the county's needs.
Okay. I have another question, though. The current land use and zoning at the city site is public, correct? And does public have any kind of limits as to the square footage that can be built there?
I don't believe that there are any FAR limitations in the public zone, but I can look that up.
And, okay, so there's no limits in the, in the, in the FAR, in the public zones? So in these proposed land uses, which would have their subsequent zoning, would there be FAR limits then? Or could there?
There could be, yes.
Okay, thank you. So is it correct to say then that, that one of the things that we're also trying to do here is to, in a sense, limit the floor area, the square footage that could happen there if the zoning and land use didn't change?
Correct, I think that that's, that's part of developing the vision for the area.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Keep going.
Okay, for the center block, we're recommending the high-density residential 2, so three-story stacked flats, but, but have an allowance for some roof forms or pitched roofs in that northern portion. And then we're recommending sort of that either-or, high-density residential 3, that would be four-story apartments, stacked flats, or could be the public use if that is a successful-
This is where the county might or might not be?
Yep, and I'm going to get to the, a little bit more with the county just after these slides.
Okay.
And so then on the west block, the high-density, high-density housing 1, that's in the form of two-story townhomes. And then also we have a couple of vacant parcels that are just behind the Breton Building that would be the land use for mixed-use 1 in conjunction with what, what else is along that street. A lot of other improvements for access and mobility and greenways. So as we talked about, the flood mitigation conveyance greenway, the new street at 11th with pedestrian bike connections at the 10th Street area, and through the center of the site, the mobility hub for bike share and car share, and then also utilization of the shared parking in the existing structure. So with all of this, what we've proposed is that balance of land uses to achieve the facilities consolidation and affordable housing in various forms. We've provided an option for Boulder County relocation should that, should the council and the county decide to move forward in further assessment of that, and significant improvements for public realm and access and mobility. So the approach for Boulder County that we talked about, when we were here in June, the council said, take, take a look at more of this. We don't like the idea of a big building on the center block with an, with an additional parking structure. So our staff teams and consultants got together and did some more assessment about how we could accommodate their needs for the 120,000 square feet, and where would be the best way to do that. What we found was that this, the southern, southern part of the, the center block would be a good location of that. It has adjacency with services across the street with mental health partners, and also could accommodate, our park, existing parking structure could accommodate shared parking for that. And what we developed also then is, and those are outlined in your memo, some proposed criteria based on the direction and, and feedback that we've heard from the council over time, that outline that net gain for affordable housing, the location there along Alpine, that parking can be addressed with that, within that existing structure. But also to make sure that the overall site design provides a really great place still, and high-quality design, public realm, and the conjunction of spaces that would provide that shared community benefit. And then we would also have to understand a lot of steps about what does that mean for fair compensation around all of the improvements and the infrastructure. I will mention, and just at the, when I finish with the, just a few more slides in the presentation, our Boulder County staff members are here, and they would like just a couple of minutes to clarify their process and some pieces of that. And that's going to be just in a moment. And that's gonna be just in a moment. So quickly, the recommendations from planning board. And I wanna just actually jump back to the map here. So a majority of the planning board members expressed support for the recommended land use plan and the urban design plan, as well as the building height map, indicating that what's proposed in the plan is a good balance of community aspirations and concerns that have reflected evolution from the earlier drafts. The comments indicated that the aspirations and concerns reflect, that the plan supports that urban walkable neighborhood with lively ground floor frontages where appropriate and helps support that concept of the 15-minute neighborhood. The land use change that was discussed and recommended by the planning board members was a swapping of the residential uses on the west block and the center block. And this is really to locate more intense uses next to the North Boulder Park with the rationale that the park provides an especially valuable asset to residents of multifamily units and especially families. The swapping of that higher-density residential use from the northern portion center block would allow a greater number of future residents more direct access to those amenities provided by the park. Board members suggested that, also that the west block might be appropriate for some limited, small-scale ground floor retail uses that might be accessed by residents and park users. It was discussed as like a small café or an ice cream shop with outdoor seating. And they recommended allowing the building height up to four stories on that west block along Ninth Street to allow for more units to have the direct access to the park, particularly in the housing types or design that would be appropriate for families. So with, I just wanted to have the map up there while we were talking about that. They suggested adding language to the plan that broadened possibilities for more of a diversity of housing types, focusing less on the dwelling units per acre, and, whoops, I went past. There we go. Focusing more on the dwelling, focusing less on the dwelling units per acre, but more on building form, excellent public realm, and quality outdoor spaces for the residents. Other recommendations included support for how the plan creates the more, what they described as more intimacy in the connections network, as well as the new streets and the connections that break up this larger blocks. Suggestions included continuing the multi-use path along Balsam Avenue east of Broadway, improvements on Alpine to increase pedestrian access, and also adding North Street as one of the green streets. The majority of the board members supported the access and mobility approach, describing the importance to stay aligned with the transportation master plan, the comprehensive plan, the SUMP principles for parking, and other city goals. The members supported reduced parking requirements and suggestions to explore, including caps on car ownership for residents, indicating that this would allow for flexibility to adapt as behavior and travel changes. Okay. Also on that, supported the proactively managing the spillover parking in the neighborhood. A few comments on the emphasizing housing and parking criteria with the Boulder County relocation. So they noted that should the county use and city use utilize all of the shared parking within the structure, that may impact the amount of housing that we have, are able to achieve on the rest of the site because of the need to be able to provide housing there. So next steps, near-term next steps. The current schedule is to have, to take the feedback that we've heard from the planning board and the city council, and come back with a final plan for public hearing on September 24th, and action by the planning board on September 24th, with then action by the city council on October 1st. Next steps following, area plan adoption, the ongoing work that Michelle described for design and renovation for the pavilion, and then area plan implementation. So taking that next step to get more specific about implementation and what that means for regulatory changes within the rest of this year in 2020. With 2021, then potential partnership site, specific site planning and redevelopment. So again, these are the questions that we'd like to walk through once we get to that. I'm gonna, I would like to-
Can I ask a quick question before I do that? Did the, Jean, did the connections plan get reviewed by the Transportation Advisory Board?
It was shared.
Okay, did they have any comments on it, or they were just thumbs up?
They were thumbs up.
Okay, no changes.
Sure, but then we're gonna-
Jean, you talked about a recommendation to take the multi-use path on Balsam and continue it east of Broadway, but it's not too far. It's like at 14th Street, you start getting into traffic circles.
Right.
So how would that be addressed?
Some of the issues with that exactly are this, the space that we have in the right-of-way in that area. So at least getting over to 13th connects you to the north-south connections that way and the green street there. Beyond 13th Street, you're gonna have, we have the bike lanes.
I just don't see how that would work.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, in the interest of time-
In the interest of time.
We're gonna go to the county?
James Butler, the facilities, man, facilities, building services.
Design supervisor. So I'm gonna start with why. Boulder County did a facilities master plan a couple of years ago, and we started with, as stewards of Boulder County's future, we provide the best in public service. That is our mission statement, and that really kind of guided the principles in this. And this is really why we want to be moving to Alpine-Balsam. It's one of our top sites, primarily because it is close to other county services, and it is also close to transit. And those are like two of our top priorities for where we are going to reallocate. The other thing that is really important as a why, the county would like to be a partner with you guys, is that if we are able to move our facilities off of the Broadway-Iris campus, then that would alleviate that area and allow that area, I should say, to become affordable housing. And Michelle's with me today, who can also back me up on this, when I say that the commissioners have said that they would make that whole site available for affordable housing. Jean has put up a slide here which shows the different kind of county services that we have. The county services are in that blue kind of purply bubble down there on the left, which is our health and human services. About 54% of those services are being provided for Boulder residents, people within the city of Boulder. And the other residents that are coming to that campus are from Lewisville-Lafayette. That data was gathered in 2011, and I'm actually researching that more, and I came up with a neat graphic that I showed Jean earlier today, which you can see kind of all these blue dots are the kind of addresses of our clients. And predominantly, they're all in Boulder with another portion coming from Lewisville-Lafayette. And this kind of red dot is showing kind of that epicenter of if it was the best location for people to get to. But this is kind of like an easy access for car access, but it's really that access to transit that we're really interested in and getting close to bus routes. And so that's gonna be something that we look into. We have a couple of more slides to kind of show you what we think of as far as the county's mission of welcoming inviting space that is easy to access for services. This is an image of our St. Verne Hub, which is the service that we want to provide on your Alpine and Balsam site, which is at 120,000 square feet. If we, back to the other bubbles, you don't have to go back. There was another bubble which was 30,000 square feet, should your flex space be open to negotiate. We would love to put our permits there, because we could see a real connection between county permits and city permits. I talked to our folks in our county permit front desk, and they get three people a day coming in to look for city services at their front desk, and they have to be put away. They get about four phone calls a day, asking, you know, should I be coming into you or going to the city? And so we see a good connection if we can get permits, because that would put us close to our transportation office and public health, environmental. Back to the St. Verne Hub, it's a one-stop shop. Many of you have actually been in that building. It's a nice facility. And right now, our campus at Broadway and Iris is a campus of five different buildings. And it's not providing this same level of service that we have for the Longmont residents. And so we wanna have some more equity between the Longmont services that we're providing and the services that we'd like to have at Boulder, City Boulder.
Wait, wait, we're gonna let you, is that your last slide? Is there one more?
There's also the slide of Broadway and Iris. This is kind of a preliminary schematic options. I don't want to be presumptuous and say I know how it's gonna end up for housing, but I wanted to present options for people. There's two buildings that are potentially historic buildings, and that's the old county hospital, and then there's the 3450 building. And those are kind of in the left side of the slide. And so what this slide is showing you is that we can provide between 50 and 420 residential units, depending on how many buildings we preserve, and if we preserve the ball fields or if the ball fields are reallocated to another site. And we recognize that the community loves the ball fields, and so I didn't want to be presumptuous to say that we would do that.
Hang on, we all have questions. Keep going. Shh. Okay, go ahead.
And so those are the different ranges.
Okay.
So it's kind of, you know, we gotta get some community engagement, we gotta work with the planning, the city planning staff to see what's appropriate there and work forward. But it would be 100% affordable housing and not a 40% with some developer. The whole site could become affordable housing.
Okay.
I get a thumbs up on that?
Excellent, okay. I want you to finish, because then we have a lot of questions. Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, so I have Sam, Lisa, Aaron, Mary, oh, I'm sorry, Sam, Lisa, Mary, Aaron, Bob. Go.
So on the bubble slide where you have the required square footage-
Yes.
You have Clinica and Mental Health Partners inside that circle. So what was that about? So you had them in red, and they're inside this circle of 120,000 square feet. So, right, isn't that-
They, yeah, they're identified as partners for the county, but they're not in that 120,000 square feet.
Okay, so that-
And that's exactly when Jean was talking about why we'd like to be on the south side, because Mental Partners is right across the street. And our St. Verne in Longmont, the Mental Health Partners lease a part of that building. And so we have that kind of quick access to their services.
Being on the south side's probably better for the neighborhood, too. So then the next question I have is, I hear that you're looking at seven sites in your site evaluation?
Up to seven. We'd like to get it down to three.
Okay, what does that mean exactly? So are you looking at seven now, or you want to identify seven? What's the-
So we're hiring an outside consultant, HDR. They're the same folks that provided the facilities master plan for us. And we're identifying the sites which are the best for the county. Back when we did this originally, we identified six different sites. Alpine and Balsam was one of them, Broadway and Iris was another. We're also looking at Issa-Rapaho, 33rd Street, Sheriff Headquarters. And kind of back to this idea of consolidation of services, you know, I haven't, we haven't really dug into it, but I can tell you that there's more bus routes up there at Alpine and Balsam, and we're closer to the other county facilities. And so from that aspect, it rises to the top, but the thing that drops it down is that we don't own any land. And that's why when we did this, Broadway and Iris was our top site for redevelopment for county services. And so if that site would become our top site for consolidation of services, then unfortunately, we wouldn't be able to do affordable housing on that site. That's just-
And so how many square feet can you get if you were to redevelop at Broadway and Iris?
We hope 120,000.
Okay, all right.
Again, it's a complicated site. There's flood mitigation, there's two potentially historic buildings, there's the ball fields. You know, we're not into active recreation, but we also, we recognize that that's an amenity that the community really loves, and so we would have to-
And we recognize that, too.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be the probably first option-
Wouldn't be an easy way to develop.
No, that would be bad. So then my last question is, you've got this HDR-
Yeah.
-engaged in looking at sites. What's the schedule and the timeline for them to come back to you with a report?
We're gonna do a quick review, and then we'll do a longer review. I mean, this is really, it's really important for us to know if we're engaged in this, because then it takes this off the table, or it means that it's on the table. So we would like to know from you. We're kind of doing a back-and-forth chicken-and-egg thing. We, I think about three months for that first review, which would be our top three sites. And then it would probably take longer, like nine months, to engage all the appropriate stakeholders in that process. Thank you.
Lisa. So how many parking spaces did you say you need?
We're not sure.
You did 120.
We're not sure how many parking spaces we'll need. We'll have to do a parking analysis.
I mean, last time you were here, you said you needed 400, something like that.
No, I-
Yeah, you did.
No, I believe, and I actually, Lynn kind of talked to me earlier, she wanted to know how many parking spaces we have at Broadway and Iris right now.
Oh.
And we have 320. So that math is out there. Now, the back lot there by the ball fields is not completely utilized. Back in 2011, Fox Hernandez did a parking analysis for us and said that we were not at capacity. And so through TDMs, and I know the city is also very interested in providing access to transportation, bus routes, and bikes and all that, to encourage our employees to take alternate transportation modes. So we're gonna have to do an analysis to see how much parking we need for the residents that are seeking services versus how much we will need for our employees.
Right, but I guess, Jean, how many parking spaces do we have right now in the parking structure? It's like four?
400, yeah.
Yeah, so if you need 320, then you basically kind of zeroed our south.
I don't know if we need 320. We have 320, and right now, all of the employees up there drive, and all of the employees in our downtown offices, maybe like 30% of them drive. And so it's a culture of that campus to drive. And so through TDMs, through methods of trying to encourage people to use alternate transportation modes, we did a charrette with Jean and seven different other architects to say, how, what are our real needs and can it work on that site? And the conclusion of that was, we think we can make it work with one more additional level of parking on that parking structure that you already have. But I'm not gonna tell you that we need 400, because I don't know, I'm not a parking-
Okay, it's, I think when you were here before, it was between 320 and 400, something like that. So on your Iris and Balsam site, previously, we had a development proposal at 3300 Iris. And people wanted to put a lot of housing units in there, as well as a bunch of coffee shops and neighborhood amenities. Would you put any neighborhood amenities on your Broadway and Iris site?
Yeah.
It doesn't look like it with the bubble diagrams.
There was like an allocation in the north, sorry, southeast corner for some kind of a mixed-use commercial space. This was developed by Coburn Architects, and they said, you know, you don't really wanna have something that's not facing the streets. If you have a coffee shop, it's most likely not gonna be utilized as much if it's buried in the site.
So that was south-southwest corner?
Southwest corner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Mary. And then Aaron, then Bob.
So just a clarification, in this diagram here that you have, are you, is this with or without ball fields?
So it's kind of hard to see the ball fields. They're kind of dashed in on the eastern side of that. But if you kind of split the whole thing in half, everything on the right is where the ball fields are. And so that's where the math kind of can be- And so, that's where the math kind of can be, you can see without the ball fields, it's 120 to 420.
So, where you're showing medium, 25 to 30 units, high, 56 to 8, what is that, to 80? I can't tell. Anyway, the lower, the southeast parcel there, that little dotted area is a ball field.
Yeah, it looks like that.
Yeah, okay.
There you go.
Okay, okay, so this, okay, so this diagram is showing, is without ball fields, basically, is what you're showing.
You see the writing, it has a both.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an answer from him that says without ball fields. So, that's all. So, this is without ball fields.
So, there's two different options, and you can see in the verbiage on the left side, with all four ball fields, you can get between 50 and 240 units. So, that's keeping the ball fields in play on-site. And then, without the ball fields, you can get 120 to 420. And so, you get significantly more if we're moving the ball fields.
Okay, got it, thank you. And the acreage on this is?
I believe it's 17.7 acres.
17.7 acres, and you're thinking that you could probably squeeze out 120,000 square feet there?
We would hope to. Again, you guys have talked a lot about zoning and height restrictions. Right now, it's a 35-foot height on there, and we do appreciate that the neighbors to the north would want to preserve their views. And so, it would be a challenging site. We can't just put a three-story building in there and think it's going to be easy. So, we would have to figure out how it would work on that site with preserving the two buildings that we think are potentially historic buildings.
Uh huh, uh huh.
And whether or not we develop the ball fields. So.
So, it's a challenging site. It's 17 acres, and it would be challenging to get the 120,000 square feet at the 17 acres.
It would be.
And it's challenging for us to get it at the eight acres, so.
The other thing that would be challenging for us from a project management standpoint, which we learned when we did the St. Braine Hub in Longmont, is that we have the services right now on that site. And so, to develop that site, we'd have to move those site, those services. And as you heard, it's challenging to find 93,000 square feet of services.
Right.
In offices in Boulder. And we don't want to have the residents that are seeking our services have to navigate all these different places when they're used to finding it in one spot.
Okay.
So, it'd be easier for us to develop one site and then relocate the site.
And in the development process, would the county go through a similar process as the one that the city is going through?
We would engage the community.
Would it include an area planning process and, such as what we're doing right now?
We, yes, please, for help.
Hi, Michelle Kryzik, Deputy of the Board of County Commissioners. So, this site is within the city of Boulder, so we would obviously be working with your planning folks to figure out what goes on the site. We wouldn't do an area plan because it's not our, within our jurisdiction, but we would definitely have a community process that would be dictated by what you all would require for any developer to come forward. So, I think that what we have here, I just want to be really clear, we're just trying to talk about what the possibilities are. This is not a defined plan.
Right, right.
This is just something to talk about. This looks like an opportunity that we should all explore, because I think earlier, you said, you know, area plans are 10 and 20 years old. We'd hate to come back 10 years from now and have people say, why didn't you even talk about this? So, that's what we're here doing, is talking about it. It may work, it may not work, but we're hopeful that we can at least figure out if there's a possibility. We are at a point at this time where the services that are provided on that site, those buildings are at the end of their useful life. They're in not very good shape. So, we have to do something. So, what we'd like to do is figure out, is this, do we want to dance together here on the Alpine and Balsam? If not, great, we will go ahead and figure out what else to do. If we do want to, then let's figure out what's the next due diligence that needs to be done. We may at the end come back and say, it doesn't work for a variety of reasons, and then we'll have to look at our options. It may be this Alpine, or maybe the Broadway site, it may be a different site within Boulder. But we need to do something fairly quickly, because those buildings are in not very good shape up there.
Great, thank you. Mary, are you done?
Hi. I think I'm done.
Okay. We have Aaron and Bob, and then I'm going to suggest we get to the public hearing.
Yeah, we're going to get to the.
Okay.
Thanks for that, and Michelle. So, the, and I think the staff has done a good job of laying out parallel possible paths in our area plan where we could work with you or not work with you, depending, it sounds like you would, from, if we decided to adopt it, kind of as suggested, leaving the opportunity open, it would take you about a year to figure out whether or not you would want to go to Alpine and Balsam. Was that, did I hear that correctly?
Well, I would say, if we knew that Alpine and Balsam was a possibility, then we could start working on that more quickly. I think for a lot of reasons, the Alpine and Balsam site makes sense for us. As James said, it would allow us to redevelop in a more orderly way, et cetera, et cetera. It's better for transit, all those things. But that doesn't mean that's the place that we will end up going.
Understood. So, I'm just trying to get at a time and question, because if we adopt the area plan more or less as proposed, we'll be done with that in a few weeks. And then, so, I'm just kind of getting the sense, oh, now you've gotten that indication, we're open to it. About how long would it take you to figure out whether or not you would want to do that?
Well, I think then, there's a lot of due diligence that need to happen.
Understood.
And so, we would start that process. And I think what we've talked about is getting a staff team together to start that due diligence process. I think from the county perspective, we would like to move forward with that as quickly as possible to find out, through that due diligence, is this a go or a not-go? So, I don't think it would take a year.
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, we would have to be doing this in partnership, because we can't do the due diligence on Alpine and Balsam on our own. And I would assume, if we want to move forward with this site as an affordable housing site, there's going to be due diligence done on this. So, I think we'd have to come together and figure out what that timeline, but I don't think it would take.
But maybe less than a year, maybe six months or nine months, something like, maybe something like that? Okay, thank you.
And I think we would, we would commit to working as quickly as possible.
Great. And so, other thing, then what you're envisioning in terms of, if you did take advantage of that opportunity to locate the site at Alpine and Balsam, and then did housing here, I was hearing 100% affordable, would you be looking at this as like a county housing authority thing, or, I mean, because generally, it takes a fair amount of subsidy to get to 100% affordable housing. Are you bringing those dollars to the table? That's kind of what I'm asking.
So, the commissioners are committed through our regional affordable housing plan to provide housing to meet the goals of that plan. That's working with all the communities. This would be an excellent site for that. Again, we haven't gone down the path to figure out all of those details. I don't know that it would be necessarily a county housing authority site, or a Boulder Housing Partners site, or some combination thereof, Thistle, you know, we don't know that, but our commitment is to try to work to make this 100% affordable housing.
But would you be imagining, is it a purely public project that with one partner or another would get to?
I haven't imagined, I haven't imagined that far.
But an aspiration for 100% affordable anyway, one way or another.
Absolutely.
And I'll just, while I've got you here, it's, I think it's probably fair to say that it's scary for folks to see buildings on the ball fields. And we've already gotten a couple emails of people panicking.
Couple, just a couple.
So far, on the, on the ball field site.
And can I just clarify, I think, one more time to say, what we tried to do with this diagram was to show you the entire range of options that could be there. That would include developing all 17 acres, or it would include different combinations and permutations of that. We are in no way saying that for sure the ball fields would go away. We are just wanted you, as the council, as you're considering this, to see what the range of options are. Now, the ball fields, we have had, as the county have had lots of conversations about the ball fields, as James said, we don't do active recreation, we do passive recreation, open space. So, we aren't good at managing ball fields. The city does a much better job of managing ball fields. So, I could envision some sort of a development here that still had ball fields on, and they may become a city amenity, because you do that better. So, just to be clear, this does not say the ball fields are going away. It's just to show you all the possibilities that could be on that site.
Okay, and I appreciate that. It would just, and I'm one, we can talk about this, but I might express that either that they stay, or there'd be no net loss of ball fields, right? Either they stay, or we find an even better, you know, set of ball fields someplace close by, you know? Because we don't, we're not taking away people's ball fields.
Yeah, let it be noted. Okay, Bob, and then we're going to move on.
So, I'm trying to understand what the deal is here. So, are you proposing that, are you proposing that we would swap land, that this would become our land, and that you would take the one or two acres or whatever it is down at Alpine and Balsam? Or would you keep this and just pay us money for the, for the land at Alpine and Balsam?
Maybe. I mean, I don't know, Bob, I don't know which way.
Well, I mean, because it was important, because you're asking us to approve a plan and reserve a chunk of land for you that we could otherwise put 90 housing units in, because that's the delta, right, Jean, is 90 housing units, would you lose? And so, I'm trying to understand, because I see, assuming the ball fields stay, 50 to 240. And does that 50 to 240, does that include preserving the historic buildings, or is that assume they go away?
It does preserve those two potentially historic buildings.
Okay.
The one building on the southeast corner, the windows are 24 inches wide, so, to use the historic preservation model of keeping it as-is, it couldn't be reused for housing, because you can't get egress through those windows. So, it would probably be some kind of, an office, a.
That's fine.
Community amenity.
You answered my question, I just wondered if it wasn't around. So, but I'm still trying to understand the upside to us, us being the broader community of changing, trading 90 units at Alpine and Balsam for somewhere between 50 and 240. I mean, 240 is bigger than 90, but 50 is pretty much smaller than 90. So, I'm just trying to understand why, because this is a lot of brain damage, right? Like, why would we do this?
So, I think, to your question of what the economics would be this, that to me is what would come out in the due diligence. I don't think we know all the ins and outs of how much this property is worth versus how much the property at Alpine and Balsam is worth, how much, you know, what the economics to do of affordable housing here. Those things have not been worked out. I can assure you, though, it is not the county's intent that we would have, take property from, at Alpine and Balsam and not have some sort of a payment for that property, whether that is a swap, or whether that's partially a swap and partially cash, or whether that's, you know, this is worth more, and so, you end up giving us cash. I, you know, I just don't know that, those answers, and those are the things we need to sort of work out.
Great. Hey, thank you very much for being here. This is very helpful to understand the suite of options, so we appreciate that. I think we're now going to hear from about 35 people. So, if you don't feel like staying, thank you for coming, but this is very helpful to have you here.
Thank you.
Oh, we have one more question.
Not for.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah.
But I do have a question for staff regarding the county parcel. It's currently public land use and public zoning, and it being 17 acres, there would probably be land use designations involved, and rezoning involved, and likely would require an area plan.
Or a study, a plan of.
All of that kind of stuff. Okay, okay, that's what I needed to know. Thank you. I'm a little offended. Okay.
Can I just, I don't know that, would it need an area plan? I mean, you'd have, you'd have to go through a land use change process and a rezoning process, but I don't know about an area plan.
Yeah, it wouldn't have to, but it could.
Fair enough.
It's what process you guys.
They already did a little micro area plan for.
We don't want to do that again.
Broadway across the street, you know, right?
Yeah. Okay. We're going to turn to the public now, and I think we have at least 35 people signed up. So, here's the deal. It's been a little, we want to make sure to have a productive and civil conversation. We know there's a very, there's a strong diversity of opinions out there, so please, no laughing, no booing, no clapping, just be kind, okay? And listen to each other. If people can queue up, so, if you're on deck, if you could come to the front and be ready to go, that would be great. Everybody will get two minutes. If you're pulling, you'll get four. And if you can start with your name and your address, or at least what part of Boulder you live in or where you live, that would be very helpful. Great. And we're going to start with Randy Smith.
So, thank you. I'm Randy Smith. I've lived on 10th Street in Newlands for 50 years. It's been my home. Anybody here live on Newlands? Anyone live in Newlands?
I have, for a while.
The picture that I'm passing around is me kayaking at Balsam in 9th Street. Behind it, you'll see the hospital covered with water, the parking lot. You told us the traffic, last meeting I went to, you said, "With behalf of that which had the hospital years that you projected, the hospital did not have permanent homes, cars, dogs, cats, children, all wanting to use our streets, the North Boulder Park 24/7." Bogus number. I am unmoved by the formula of .85 spaces required per whatever, and justifying your actions with flow charts from national statistics. I don't care. I live in Newlands, and you're doing a disaster there. This massive eyesore you have planned cannot ease the mistake that you made in purchasing the hospital property for far too much money. Remember me in the kayak. It is a lake. It is not prime real estate, as it's made out to be by Boulder Community Hospital. It never was. The site is a parking lot, and it always has been, and that's why Boulder Community Hospital did not expand their hospital, they moved after careful evaluation. If this is being built in your neighborhood, since you don't live in Newlands, you would be standing right where I'm standing, opposing the stupid plan. That's what you'd be doing. We have been given a great opportunity with BCH moving out east, as you guys should do, too.
Thank you, sir.
Can I finish it?
You finish your one sentence.
Thanks very much, I will. I've got muscular dystrophy, I'm trying my best. We could plan an extensive park, we could tear down the hospitals we plan to, we could have a concert amphitheater, we've been given a huge hunk of land in downtown Boulder. Don't blow it, you guys.
Okay, thanks.
Let's reevaluate the vision, let's close your eyes and decide what you want to see when you wake up.
Thank you. Deborah Yin?
Yes.
You're pulling with two people? Could they raise their hands? Okay, great. You have four minutes. And hey, I guess, given how many of you are in the hour, we're going to be pretty, you can finish your sentence when you get to red, but otherwise, we're going to be pretty rigorous. And it's only just so that we can get everybody in before it gets too late.
Are we ready? Okay. Do I point it down? Over there. Okay. These concepts should inform the area plan and hospital redevelopment. Boulder just declared a climate emergency. Climate change effects on water resources. Studies confirm high carbon costs with new construction compared, higher carbon costs with new construction compared to adaptive reuse of existing buildings. Upzoning and redevelopment most often results in demolition, loss of local businesses and services, and displacement of people. Boulder cannot be considered in isolation from other cities when in 2016, there were 11 million vacant housing units in the country. The COM Plan Update survey found that most citizens want Boulder to remain a small city. Cost recovery from overpayment for the hospital property should not be at the expense of the This is one of the city's proposals with a density of 49 dwelling units per acre totaling Council members have referred to Holiday while talking about the hospital site, demonstrating a disconnect with what staff's showing. In this more dense area of Holiday, density is 19 units per acre and 93 units total. Option 1A is two and a half times more dense than Holiday. This is a Holiday-like residential development. Density is 19 units per acre, 90 units total. Oops, it's going forward. Okay, sorry, this is.
Can we go forward or backward? I'm going to run it for you, because it looks like the clicker's not going.
Okay, can I go to slide seven? That, slide seven, okay, I'm sorry, slide six. "Amassing study looking down Balsam of the city's proposal," slide seven. "Streets in Holiday," slide eight. "Amassing study looking down Balsam of a Holiday-like development with existing hospital ghosted." Slide nine. "Here's a scenario I present to council to consider. It keeps the multi-story hospital and expands it and the pavilion with additions. The residential area is based on Holiday with the exception along Alpine where three to four-story apartment buildings are shown. Density is 20 dwelling units per acre totaling 144." Slide 10. Slide 11. "The community-focused area plan sent to you by Leonard May is an alternative that addresses the shortfalls of the city's plan. The focus here is to protect the characteristics valued by neighbors. Land use prototypes are informed by these characteristics. At the hospital site, two-story townhouses face balsam and ninth transition to the neighborhood. A land use prototype protects historic properties while allowing owners to transfer development rights. The height limit remains at 35 feet throughout, except for two areas where development rights may be transferred to. These locations do not obstruct views." Slide 12. "I urge council to postpone a decision to a date far enough in the future to sufficiently inform the public with information that clearly conveys what the public will experience with the city's proposal. Truly collaborate with citizens rather than repeat the current practice of tightly controlled citizen interactions. Return to the public with a new proposal that is the result of collaboration and is consistent with citizen preferences as established in the COM Plan Update survey, and reconsider demolition of the multi-story existing hospital building. Thank you for your time, consideration, and hard work."
Deborah, we have a question. Bob has one, too. Deborah, can you send us that PowerPoint?
Yes, I think you...
And then, oh, we, okay, could we get that? So on the hospital, do you, if you kept the existing hospital, or at least most of it, the multi-story part of it, what do you envision in there? Do you envision housing? Do you envision offices? What would that be?
Well, I think that depends on what the city's needs are. It could either be offices. I looked at it as offices, but it could also be apartments.
And then, thank you. And then, in your scenario, in the materials you had sent us, so I had studied those, I think on the south side, where you have the multi-unit flats or the apartments, you had made an assumption of 1,000 square feet per unit. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then, on the north side, where you have townhouses and stuff, you had proposed something like 2,000 square feet?
Actually, 1,800 square feet.
1,800. And how much flexibility would there be in that square footage? So you have some of them at 700, some at 900, changes, some at 15, some 2,000?
Well, for the apartments, I just, I modeled it on what I could figure out, you know, with the city's mapping, what the square, average square footage of Holiday apartments. So that was my starting point, and that's a gross square footage. So it's 1,000 square feet per unit, but it's gross.
Right.
So once you deduct stairs, or, you know, any kind of utility spaces, then the unit itself would be less.
It's really helpful. Thank you.
And then, the townhouses, I wanted to mention, they could be smaller, they could be bigger, they could be two apartments, it could be one single unit.
And I think in your, in the units, or in the plan you showed, you had some carriage houses, I think, on the western side. And so those could be not only garages, but those could be granny flats? Or they would be garages with granny flats?
Yeah. What I was thinking, they would be two-car garages that are shared by the townhouses, and then there would be an ADU on top. And I don't know how that would, you know, work in terms of who owns the ADU, or... Thank you. Details.
Thanks, Deborah. I just want to make sure I'm doing a side-by-side comparison. So you're targeting 144 units, which is kind of right in the middle of the city's range of 120 to 170, so that part I get. Would there be space, then, for also city offices or county offices? Neither, both?
I was showing the, could we go back? The pavilion building...
So that would still be city offices?
Yeah, the pavilion building and the hospital building remain, and they could be offices. And then I showed, in blue are the additions. So the yellow-roofed buildings are the existing buildings.
Got it, okay.
And the blue are additions.
Blue additions. And we obviously know what the pavilion building is. Do you have any idea what the yellow hospital building is? I mean, if you, if county...
In terms of square footage, I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
I didn't figure that.
Do you happen to know, Michelle?
Not that specific area.
Okay.
We could look it up, but...
Okay, thanks.
Mary. So Deborah, you looked in your layout on the, on the south side, and the mid and western blocks. What, did you design those massings based on the city's proposed, the draft area plan's proposed land uses?
I did not try to make them conform to a city land use prototype. However, you could apply some of those land use prototypes to, you know, what I've shown, though I'm not sure that it conforms to the city's latest iteration.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, next up is Gary Erling. Gary Erling.
Hi, I took some notes that, sitting here listening to this council meeting, I'm going to change and just kind of go ad hoc. There seems to be, at least coming from the city council, that we have a set of crises. We have climate, we have Vision Zero, we have open space, transportation, crime, drug, and muni. All these things seem to be crises. And no one in the city seems to think the council represents their point of view. Nobody thinks that the city actually listens when they have open houses. Why is that? Why is it that other cities don't seem to have that problem? Almost everything I can think of in Boulder has changed over the 20-some years. I lived here this time. I lived here another time for another set of 20 years. Boulder's a very different place. There isn't the warmth, the feeling of community. Can I tell you why I think it is? It's because we aren't represented by you. We don't have a representative form of government. Look at the governments that the city of Longmont and Fort Collins have. They have councilmen elected by district and some at large. The mayor is elected by the people, not by the council. There's nobody here that has voted for any of the comprehensive plans. It's, when you say it's our comprehensive plan, it's your comprehensive plan. It does not necessarily mean that anybody here really agrees with it. So I'm just saying, we need, if we're going to solve these crises, we need to work together. And the first thing we need to change...
Mr. Erling, thank you. We have other people to get to. Thank you very much.
I know. And you said I could finish a sentence. So if one people to come together and come to a good solution, why don't you take the lead from other cities like Fort Collins and actually come up with representative form of government?
Thank you, Gary. Barbara? And your pulling was two people. Can they raise their hand? One, two. Great, you get four minutes.
I'm from Central Boulder. And the Alpine Balsam plan would allow up to 640 multi-person residents in this area. I believe we need more research and more transportation infrastructure before adding this kind of density. I live in the area, and I know from long experience that it's already underserved by both roads, bikeways, sidewalks, and parking. Allowing this density level before adequate transportation infrastructures in places, to me, like putting the cart before the horse. And this could have irreversible consequences for the livability of our city. The traffic study concluded the level of service for adjacent intersections will mostly remain the same with this area plan. However, I believe that the area plan is based on some faulty assumptions. Please consider these points. Number one, the plan assumes new residents will need only .8 parking spaces per multi-person residence. But how will residents get to stores that provide necessities, such as King Supers and Home Depot on 30th Street? I have ridden the bus to work many, many times in Boulder. Even so, I always drive to these stores on 30th Street and 28th Street. It would take probably quadruple my travel time to get there on a bus. And so I choose to drive, and I love downtown, and I do walk downtown all the time, but it's for the non-necessities of life, such as restaurants and art galleries. I believe that many of the new residents in this, in this plan would use their cars, just like I do, to get to 28th and 30th. However, there are only three roads that connect Broadway with 30th, Iris, Balsam, and Arapahoe. Two out of these three roads have only one lane in each direction. Can they handle the errands of 640 households? Wouldn't it be better to put those new households and city offices, as we've heard are potentially going to be located, as well as county offices, closer to where those major four- and six-lane roads exist, such as 28th, 30th, 47th, 55th, and Pearl Parkway? Add to that the needs of families. Oops, I better look at my light. What about parents of school-aged children? Buses currently pass kids by while they're waiting at bus stops to go to school, because the buses are full. Kids tell their parents they don't feel safe to walk to or bike to school. Even a teacher on a bike was hit by a car this week at Boulder High. The neighborhood school has a waiting list. Parents choose schools to fit their children that may not be their neighborhood school. So 640 new households will encounter the same need to drive their kids to school, to sports, and to other out-of-school activities. I think all parents know what this is like. Number four, increased traffic on Broadway will push traffic onto residential streets such as 9th. 9th Street really can't safely carry heavy traffic volumes due to its hills and curves. Five, does the city and county have funding in place to support intersection improvements, more frequent bus service, protected bike lanes, sidewalks, parking, and school expansions in order to maintain the current multimodal mobility and safety? Are there funds to build additional lanes to handle the kind of traffic and hundreds of new trips the plan will generate? I believe that the current transportation infrastructure isn't ready for a plan of this density. I endorse the proposal from Think Boulder for moderate density with an emphasis on permanently affordable housing and a maximum 35-foot height limit. This fits the area, and it's supported by more than 1,000 people who have signed our petition that's only been out about a week, and distributed by a small community group who organized the petition. But there's a lot of support for it out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Emily? And Emily, you're pulling with two people. Could they raise their hands? You only need two of them. Okay.
Good evening, council. Thank you. Emily Reynolds, Old North Boulder. I support the development points outlined in Think Boulder's petition to the city and come to you with a plea for moderation and more time for a decision on Alpine Balsam. To quote the Think Boulder petition, "We oppose land use changes that significantly increase housing density and building heights surrounding the hospital without proper community engagement and demonstration that our city can handle the extra population safely and without compromised and stressed levels of services. Extreme ideas about density are being promoted by city planners, city staff, the planning board, and some council members. But high density that exceeds our 35-foot limits is rejected universally by the over 1,000 people who signed Think Boulder's survey within a week. These people find this to be an extremely important quality-of-life issue. At minimum, it warrants informing the people of the neighborhoods across the city who don't want this kind of rampant, unconsidered, uninformed development. There's been minimal, poorly-planned community engagement from the start, and it feels like the city is trying to jam this huge project through before people realize what is intended for this area. I'm making the point that the community has not been properly informed and that has not had sufficient time for public consideration. The city's attempts have clearly been insufficient, as people in the neighborhood are still largely unaware of the city's plans for Alpine Balsam and have absolutely no idea of the new area plan proposals. Hosting meetings in June and July, popular vacation months, projected low participation rate, only 336 people. You also received a memo from Planning Department that had another 11 responses. So this is about 3 one-thousandths of 1% of the population of Boulder. I'd like to say that's not representative of even the neighborhoods surrounding this area. So the people who took your survey found it pretty opaque and difficult to understand. Think Boulder, in contrast, has managed over 1,000 signatures saying, "No way." And there was no range of reactions. Everybody universally said, "That density level is just wretched. Please don't do that." To reiterate, the city's outreach to the people of Boulder was insufficient, too hasty, and poorly executed. This is unacceptable, with such unbelievably large taxpayer funds and a well-functioning, already vibrant neighborhood at risk. Over 1,000 people joined me in stating emphatically that we support moderate development and no upzoning around the site until we actually have a genuine and more considered public awareness campaign to be conducted by the city, rather than just mere lip service." Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Jorge? And you're pulling. Everybody's pulling tonight. You're pulling with two people. Can they raise their hands? One, two.
Okay.
Thank you. I live on 7th Street. My family, extended family also lives here. I've got 19 family members in Boulder currently. I wanted to point out something that was glossed over by council as it relates to Planning Board's recommendations. Planning Board, at the end of the planning meeting a few weeks ago, recommended flipping and actually adding density to this plan and putting four stories on the park with retail spaces below. There has been zero community feedback, or nearly zero, that supports that at all. That was completely out of hand and out of turn, and didn't represent hardly anything from anyone at the community at large, alone our neighborhood. Number two, existing conditions. I'm going to pass out a, pass out a height map that the city staff had put together relative to the building heights that currently exist in this area. What you'll notice is there are ranges of 25 to 35 feet, 35 to 45 feet, 45 to 55 feet, and over 55 feet. This is the problem with the city as developer. As a developer, I could see why they put this together. The images on this site are pointing to the buildings that are identified as those heights. You'll see on the left-hand corner of the site, a building that's identified as 25 to 35 feet that appears one story from the street. You'll see a 1970s parking, apartment building on Broadway up at the top left that says it's 45 to 55 feet. In fact, city staff claimed that there were four-story buildings surrounding this area, and some of this area. As far as I'm aware of, there's only one single four-story apartment building in the entire radius of this site. And that building was built in the 70s with, or 80s, or whenever it was built, with relatively low ceiling heights. And it shows on this plan as 35 to 45 feet. The next page behind here shows what the city did as demonstrated pictures from the site. It has four pictures, all emphasizing the height of the buildings. It doesn't show 2/3 of the site, which show clear views to the mountains and are vacant. Again, this is the problem with the city as a developer, is a biased point of view to try to get a certain point of view put across to the community. This was Appendix A of the vision plan, if anyone wants to look it up. Finally, parking ratios. Parking ratios right now in this plan are projected at .8 per unit. Current multifamily utilization in Boulder for off-street parking for multifamily as a whole is .96. Boulder Junction was built at one space per unit and currently has a parking utilization of onsite of .9. A full .1% or 10%... onsite of .9, a full 10% higher than what is planned here. Essentially with no proof of concept with what the .8 is representing. And so I ask that we have a proof of concept that the .8 would actually work here and not overcrowd our streets. Furthermore, it's being glossed over, and in the staff's projections today, they showed that adding one level of parking garage would satisfy the Boulder County's needs. We just heard from Boulder County that said they didn't know how much parking they needed, and certainly one level is not going to provide a few hundred spaces. So I'd ask you to look at the heights, the parking in detail, and the feedback from the community rather than a few people on the Planning Board who have a bias towards density. Thank you.
Thank you. Francesca? You're pulling with two people. Can they raise their hands? One. Where's your other? Oh. Gotcha. All right, you have four minutes. Thank you.
Hi. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. My name is Francesca Silva, and I live on 10th Street near the Alpine-Balsam site. I'm here not just for my neighborhood but for our group, Think Boulder, but also for all of my fellow Boulder citizens who are worried about high-density building coming to their areas. Like many cities across the country, Boulder might benefit from some amount of additional housing, both permanently affordable and market rate. However, the desire for more housing does not mean that we should break our existing height limits and zoning restrictions that were created to protect the unique character of Boulder. You are considering adding four and possibly five-story-high-density housing in places such as the Alpine-Balsam site and in the surrounding area, but having any four- or five-story buildings other than the medical pavilion will require a sea change in the land use and will require changing height limits from 35 feet to 45 or even 55 feet. These changes would enormously affect the feel and character of our neighborhoods, not to mention affecting the view corridors for pedestrians, bicyclists, and residents alike. To be clear, I'm not objecting to city offices in the medical pavilion. I'm just referring to new buildings that will go on the site and in the area. Words like "housing crisis" have been bandied about as if we are Los Angeles County or the San Francisco Bay Area. We have a special city. We don't have to jump on the bandwagon of high-density housing, and this is important. Have you looked at the negative effects of increased population density? Is there data to show that adding more density will unequivocally improve people's lives? If so, is there a limit to this? A point at which density negatively impacts the quality of life for people living in Boulder? A quick online search led me to a study by the University of Illinois Medical Center that studied populations in the Netherlands and found a correlation between high-density living and increased pathologies. The Netherlands was a good test subject because there was little poverty and health care is accessible for everyone. I respectfully ask that you study this subject before you decide to make major changes to Boulder's existing height restrictions and land use. Perhaps a solution would be to add a moderate amount of two- and three-story housing at the Alpine-Balsam site and wait and see how the neighborhood operates in terms of safety and population density. At that point, a more clear picture of an appropriate area plan can arise. For example, adding a holiday-style complex with permanently affordable housing to the Alpine-Balsam site would work well in the neighborhood without negatively impacting the safety and beauty of the area. This project will cost well over $100 million, and we have no test subject to compare it to. Please consider a more measured, slow-growth approach that will add housing to Boulder and still fit with the corresponding neighborhoods. We, as a city, should take the time to do this right. Please don't destroy the very qualities that made us love Boulder in the first place. Thank you.
Francesca?
Francesca?
Yeah. Can you send us the University of Illinois study? That would be good to read. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy? And if Josh Goldstein can be ready, that would be great.
My name is Nancy Sanders, and I've lived in Boulder on Fourth Street for the past 22 years. I thought the purchase of the hospital site by the city was for the purpose -- purchase of the site was for the purpose of consolidating city government buildings plus affordable and some market-rate housing. I was shocked to see the Alpine-Balsam area draft plan only last week with all of the far-reaching plans covering a much larger area than the former hospital site. Potential zoning changes allowing four-to-five-story multi-unit dwellings with insufficient parking for each and the possibility of up to 640 units in the area. While I know the first order of business is the consolidation of city offices, it's not hard to imagine that this plan is setting the stage for highly-dense market-rate housing. I feel that this process lacks the transparency on the part of the city that a change of this type deserves, and it makes me suspicious that there are things going on behind the scenes that will benefit real estate developers and others but not necessarily the citizens of Boulder. I urge the city to delay adoption of the Alpine-Balsam plan to seek more public input with the character of the neighborhood in mind and to be transparent about its findings. I see no reason to modify the height restrictions currently in place in order to build more units and jam as many people as possible in this area. With the shortage of parking proposed, there will be a negative impact on the surrounding streets for resident parking. The traffic in this small area will, of course, become ridiculous. A large part of this plan contemplates everyone starting to use bicycles and buses to get around. I think that's a worthy goal, but it will take some time to change the lifestyles of an entire town, and more transportation options need to be available first, like more frequent and accessible buses, bike lanes, reconstruction of streets, and more, all of which will cost lots of money and take time. I'm strongly opposed to any variance on the current building height restriction and the density proposed. Is that my time up? Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Josh? And then if Judy Nog can be ready.
Hi. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate the time. First point is just I support the Think Boulder proposal. I think the density, the high-density proposal that's been shown to us, to me, looks like we're trying to turn the neighborhood into Brooklyn Heights. Brooklyn Heights delightful place, and for people who want to live there, they should move there. I moved to Boulder to live in a different kind of place, and I feel like for people who really want density, Denver's right down the road. You've got it there. It's well set up for it. What you're going to create with that plan is a big parking lot, and we're going to start hearing horns like we do in New York City. We're going to have stress levels. People are going to be late for their meetings and to go places. And this Pollyannaish view that these new people who move in are going to be super-special and they're going to ride their bikes and skateboards everywhere, and they're never going to have a car, is really, I think, just not reality. So these people are going to have cars in probably the same proportions that existing residents in the area have cars. I live on Seventh Street. I live right in the neighborhood. My family has three cars. You know, people need cars in this neighborhood, and I just don't think this accomplishes anything that creates a better lifestyle for those of us who live in Boulder. Just think it's all going to be more crowded and just more stressful and negative. So I don't know. The city, I could see, they want this clearly. This is great for the people who work for the city for some reason, but I think you're hearing from the residents and the community that we just don't want this. And if you vote for it, I think we're going to encourage people to vote you out of office. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy? And then Francois.
Hi. Judy Nog, North Boulder. These comments are solely my own. Recently, I've been researching public engagement, and who knew that it's a blossoming field in academia? So I found out that city governments and universities purport to provide public engagement these days. It's a hot thing to do. Their efforts look great on paper. Some, like a project in Boston recently, was very successful. Many efforts, however, fail. Two looming factors contribute: the agenda is controlled by the entity, and the public is solicited only for a preset range of options. Therefore, the outcome already feels baked in. How do you know if engagement works? It's pretty obvious. Consider the efforts for sub-community planning and manufactured housing in Boulder. Both those efforts really undertook extensive outreach, and both programs are proceeding without resistance. Consider, however, Alpine-Balsam. The structure was not conducive to real engagement. The public feels like they've been handled. The red flags. The people most impacted have raised valid, unaddressed concerns about parking, traffic, views, and density. A rocket scientist, really, a rocket scientist, who's analyzed scientific data for decades, spent hours on the traffic study, and found fault. Architects, whom we've heard Deb today, came up with a plan that would provide more affordability with less density. The parking report was tucked in at the end of a long traffic study, a year after it was conducted. I see I'm running out of time, so I'm jumping to the end. Who needs this turmoil? Isn't there a better way for everybody? Please redirect staff to take a step back to look at other options. Options that gather public input as a first step. Options that provide more affordable housing, which I really care about, with much less density, which I also care about. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Francois. And then Kathleen Hancock, if you can be ready.
Hello. Well, I guess I'm going to present the opposing view here this evening. I am very pleased with what I have seen in these plans that you've been considering, and I understand there's a lot of trade-offs to be made. I just want to ask folks, did you not remember there was a hospital here that generated a whole lot of traffic? There is -- how tall is this current building that is there that actually is, I believe, at least four stories tall? And we've had a lot of mass, and we've had -- hospitals generated tons. It has not -- and it's -- I've been living there for years. It has not been a great walking pedestrian area. It's, quite frankly, very boring in the hot sun when you go by all this parking areas. We're talking about transforming this into an incredibly exciting place where I think it makes total sense for the city offices, especially if you really aggressively pursue transportation demand management measures. But we need housing in this town. It is a crisis, and I feel like it's unjust to constantly say to people who need housing and the only realistic way to get it is through density because of the high land costs. Let's be honest with ourselves. And we need this kind of diversity. We have very little residential land that is zoned for this kind of thing. This is a gem of a site for transit-oriented corridors and development, and for these people, we have to make bold steps to meet our climate crisis plan to transition out of cars. We can do all kinds of stuff like car sharing for people who do want to go to Home Depot or wherever across town, but this site offers people the ability to live a car-light existence and to do all kinds of innovative things. And that's what we have to look for for the future, or we're just kidding ourselves. We can make all these bold proclamations about climate, but we know building energy is far reduced with shared walls and density. Anyway, I won't go on, but please go with this slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Francois. Kathleen? And you're pulling with two people. One, two. Okay. And after Kathleen, we'll have Sonia. Sonia.
Okay. All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Kathleen Hancock. Since November, I've been working with neighbors to try to shape the Alpine-Balsam site, as I think all of you are aware. Our group, Think Boulder, advocates for a moderate plan that balances the interests of the immediate neighbors with the city's wider goals. A few months ago, we created a survey designed to gauge what our Newlands neighbors wanted for the site. Overwhelmingly, they wanted 50 units. We presented these findings to you and many others. Unfortunately, at the last city council meeting, all but Mirabai voted to remove the lowest density option from further consideration. We listened to your feedback, especially your calls to balance neighborhood character and desires with city demands for more permanently affordable housing, and we developed a moderate proposal. To make sure we had support for the proposal, we created a petition. What you're looking at here are all the signatures from that petition. As of an hour ago, when I last checked, we have 1,025 signatures. Also, just go ahead, since you have it in front of you. If you look at the second page, it shows where those residents live, and we also followed your instructions to go beyond the neighborhood. So this is something like -- oh, now I forgot my number. 36% are from -- thank you, 36 are from Newlands, and the rest are from all over the city. A lot of time went into collecting this data for you, and I hope you will appreciate it. Okay. So what I want to do now is this -- I'm going to show the petition so that we all can be reminded of exactly what it said. So the first page really just lays out the importance of this project. Next slide, please. Secondly, we put down what we oppose, and these things have all, at one time or another, been part of the proposals. We are happy to see that, for example, the five-story buildings have been taken off, and some of the other ones have also been scaled back a bit. Okay, next. So what do we support? Permanently fixing building heights at 35 feet maximum. No deals for so-called community benefits. The things in brackets are ones that I've added. Subsidized housing for moderate and low-income families, including three-story flat apartment buildings and two-story triplex townhouses for sale. This would be what I'm calling here, or actually, I got this from the code, medium-density resident housing, and HDR, high-density resident housing, one. Next, please. .95 parking spaces per unit, as is being used in Boulder Junction, and inducements to eliminate car ownership. This is really critical, that we have this aspect as well. A parking plan that goes 10 blocks out and that residents do not have to pay for. Next, please. Traffic. Others will be speaking to traffic. Let me just say, I hope you will put some money and thought into creating safe lanes for bikes. I lived in Berlin, Germany, for a year. All their lanes are up high and very safe. You may be aware, outside of Boulder High, somebody hit a woman on a bike just two days ago. Next. We all agree there should be world-class design. So who supports this plan? As I mentioned, we have 1,025 signatures. 36% are from Newlands, 64% across the country -- across, not the country, the city. Actually, we did have somebody sign from Kansas at one point. Okay. The last slide, please. This is actually -- I'm sorry, one more. This last one is mine. This is not on the petition. I say it is time to move forward. I think, actually, the city has done a lot on the site plan itself. The area plan has been problematic, and we've been scrambling to catch up with what is going on. In the end, I just wanted to say, I ask you to support the moderate plan for the site. And having listened to what we just heard about the area plan, you can change those codes differently to ramp down that density in the area, and that's what we want to see. Then we can support the area plan. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a question for you.
Hey, over here. Hey, thank you for that, and I appreciate the thoughtful engagement that you and your group have been engaged in. So just one question. I think I understood your proposal generally, but the height cap of the 35 feet?
Yep.
Are you talking about the entire site that you would look for that?
Yes.
Including where they're currently 60-foot-tall?
Well, if you're talking about the pavilion.
Or like the hospital tower site?
No. So existing structures are fine, but any new buildings?
Okay. But unfortunately, we'll talk about it later. We're probably going to have to tear down the hospital building.
We already decided to.
So the pavilion -- okay, so the pavilion would stay, and then beyond that, any of the buildings would be capped at the three stories.
Okay. Thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, thank you. Tearing down to the two stories.
Quick additional follow-up. We're talking about putting an additional story on the pavilion building. Is that a problem for your group?
We have not thoroughly discussed that one.
It's pretty far away from where.
I would say so.
Okay.
I would say we would probably not favor that. And in fact, the county move, we would also not favor because that's a four-story building. Thank you.
Thank you. Sonia.
Right, Sonia.
Sonia. Sonia, and two people out there are pulling. There they are. Okay, you have four minutes.
Yeah, Katie, sir. Great. Hi. I recently moved back to Boulder after being away for four years. I moved from a city of 300,000 people and now find it alarming how challenging it is to traverse a city of 107,000. In four years, it is astounding how congested and dangerous the roads are. I am saddened that the city has built up Boulder without sufficient infrastructure. When I saw the Alpine-Balsam area plan -- When I saw the Alpine Balsam area plan presented by the city, I was aghast at their proposal. It is a far-out dream to think that ultra-high-density housing will work there without further planning to handle the increased human traffic. We need to be realistic and do proper planning and deal with the reality. Boulder is overbuilding and does not address the rising traffic congestion and safety risks that come with massive traffic. You can see in Europe how much planning goes into making these cities. For example, in Germany and the Netherlands, it is safe for bikes coupled with an incredibly efficient bus and train system. It is easy without a car. This is far from true in Boulder. Cars and bikes and pedestrians in Boulder are all meshed together on most roads. I've witnessed five accidents in two weeks, when I recall it was rare to see them in Boulder four years ago. Yesterday in Arapahoe, by the high school, a street with no bike lanes, by the way, I saw an accident involving a car and a bike. The windshield was pushed in. Where we lived in Europe, it was safe to ride your bike as the roads were wide enough and had bike lanes separate from car traffic. Buses traverse the entire city every 15 minutes, and there were frequent trains. It was convenient to get to the next city by train or downtown by bike or bus. We are supposed to be a green city that cares about the environment, but this is not supported by our practices and our planning. Why are we not talking about the elevated train from Longmont to Boulder, Superior, Westminster and Denver? We have 50,000 commuters each day coming into Boulder. Why require them to drive? There's no way we can give them all housing in Boulder. We ask that the city create a plan that is safe for bikes and pedestrians and helps those living outside the immediate area get to work in environmentally, excuse me, friendly way. Five years ago, Santa Monica built an elevated train from the beach to downtown. Why is Boulder not pushing for that? I'm saddened, actually. Lastly, when I saw the recent area plan, I stood in front of the Ideal Market and the adjacent community shopping center and center and talked to our community. Ninety percent of those I spoke to had no idea about the proposed plan to rezone these areas to mixed use, allowing housing to be built on these sites. People had not heard about the community shopping centers areas and the talk about rezoning them for multi-use, high-density residential. I then walked the streets east of there, and the same thing. People are not aware and they don't want it. So to reiterate, 90% did not even know of this plan. They were shocked and upset to hear about it. 1% said, "Great idea," and the remaining 9% literally said it was a bad idea and quote, "The city would never do that to this area," meaning tear it down and put three-story housing there. In summary, we are advocating you, the city council members, to use your wisdom to support a moderate plan, like the one Think Boulder is proposing. There needs to be systematic community outreach to retrieve feedback and to build awareness, as so many people do not know what is truly being proposed at the hospital site and the surrounding areas, nor do they know or understand the rezoning plans. We please ask that you wait any further upzoning until after the site is developed. Meanwhile, please use your power and leadership to push for a light-rail system that is truly an environmentally-friendly, sound way to deal with the 50,000 commuters, and focus on state-of-the-art bike lanes that could help you reach your goals of building a model American city that embraces some of Europe's pro-cycling movement. We need you to keep our residents safe and build an infrastructure that addresses safety and fluid traffic flow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Philip Nicholson. And then if David Adamson will be ready.
Yep, my name is Philip Nicholson. Thank you for making this time available. I live on 8th Street, right just above North Boulder Park. And all the questions I prepared are, have been dealt with with other people, and I'm struck by being in the meeting. I'd like to share with you my reaction to being in the meeting, because I actually think you have a horrible task. And the reason I think that is that a lot of the information that was presented here, which is not available in any kind of public forum that I know of, but it is, looked to me like it was more or less unintelligible. And it wasn't, it was the maps, the one map that the lady produced that had, where she said, "Here is what we're gonna do," actually made some sense. But the rest of the maps with their strange colors and things like that, and seemed to me to be unintelligible, particularly where they started to show the, what would happen at the, at that block area, which I walk across all the time, and it's just not a very big space. And there's the plan to put all these high-density things. And I was watching to see where the paths through there were, and it just seems to me that the, there needs to be more careful illustrations of what it is that is being proposed. I agree with all of the principles that have been said by the public people objecting, but I do think you deserve better information in order to make your decision.
Thank you. David? And after David, we have Jerry Shapins.
Can I, can I?
I'm not sure if it will work. Try it over again.
That's my mom, but don't have enough time. I'm David Adamson, 815 North Street. I'm also the executive director of Goose Creek Camellia Trust. I want to tell my nice friend, George, that I am planning to do a big ice cream business at, on Broadway though, so I just, I just wanna. We are very excited, this beautiful professional group that we've been working with for four and a half years, to ask you to please consider a very high-community benefit area plan. We want the ability for developers to take very seriously this beautiful vision plan that the staff and all of us came up with, and about a new model, a new model to do equitable, affordable and sustainable living. And takes our values, our Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan values, that have been dear to us for many, many years, very seriously about sustainability, about diversity and about compact form. We have a serious housing crisis in this town, and there are real people who are very burdened by this situation, having to drive in. We have so much traffic because we've pushed the middle class out. A few elements of a cool plan that would be, we hope would be forthcoming from developers would include, yes, some more housing. We've studied the site. We think we can do everything within three to five stories. No compromise on views. We also think there's a little room for a Lion Center-like, permanently affordable office space. The key thing that's not being appreciated right now is with a transportation, transformative transportation plan that moves to shared transportation, this density can be a delight. The key thing that I want to emphasize is when we think about very low levels of housing, it's super unaffordable. I'll send you this. How can we possibly have these very high land costs per unit? We can do it in a beautiful townhouse way. And last, I just want to say, there's a lot of market support for this. So now we're gonna show how such a plan could be beautiful. Do you want me to?
Thank you. One of the shortcomings of the.
Can you just introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Jerry Shapins. I live at 644 Dewey Avenue. I live two blocks away from Alpine Balsam, and I walk through that area every day, all the time, and I know it quite well. So the message that I'm trying to really promote here, let's see, how do I move this forward? The one in the middle or the?
The one on the right.
This one?
That one.
Okay. Is to really pay attention to the public realm. The public realm is where people have a good time. It's where people have experiences, where people meet each other. The better we do with the public realm, the more we know each other, the more good times we have, and the better memories we have. It's really, really important when we talk about housing, transportation, land use and zoning, that we also talk about the interconnectivity of public plazas, linear parks, and also ways to hold water that are multipurpose. And for sure, the city has done great work so far to really accomplish some of those ideas. So some of these drawings show some of the possibilities and some of the happy circumstances, like a super bus stop on Broadway that can connect directly to Nobo Park right through the site. And when it goes through the site, it could end with a beautiful civic plaza that has a spray pool, has an area to enjoy an outdoor coffee, even looking across the street at other people having coffee. And wonderful experiences can be here. And what I like about this is its public face. The other possibility on an interior plaza next to mobility options, where it is like a wood or, it is, there are some cars that are guests, but mostly people are walking, cycling, enjoying playground areas along the linear park, possibly at 10th Avenue. One of the most interesting things to me is how the city has denied the opportunity to hold water in Nobo Park. Nobo Park, the water is high, you can dig it out, you can restore it to a floodplain condition, a riparian condition. You could also create amazing places for kids there, and it can connect to a one-off street for people to have a place right across the street. Thank you so much.
With ice cream.
With ice cream. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt Fromer. And then Ryan Hill, if you can be ready.
Hello, my name is Matt Fromer. I'm a resident of Boulder's Whittier neighborhood, about a five, 10-minute walk from Alpine Balsam. I also work on clean transportation policy for a local nonprofit called Sweep, and I recently co-authored a report called Growing Greener, which outlines the environmental benefits of compact development. I found the staff's area plan to be completely reasonable. As a researcher and advocate, I believe that all communities in Colorado need to fully embrace smart-growth land use policies in order to achieve our ambitious transportation and climate goals. We cannot solve the climate crisis without more efficient land use. Boulder is a leader on climate policy, but Boulder's lack of housing directly contributes to regional sprawl and pollution. Three in five jobs in Boulder are held by people who do not live here, and 80% of those non-resident employees drive to work alone each day, which is exacerbating regional congestion and air quality issues. I would argue that all emissions caused by the city's actions matter, not just those within city limits. The Growing Green analysis found that if just one-third of Boulder's non-resident employees moved into the city and drove as much as current residents did, there'd be about 6,400 fewer single occupancy vehicles on Boulder's roads every day. Compact development delivers numerous environmental benefits, including the protection of undeveloped lands from sprawl. Colorado's losing about 250,000 acres of rural land each year to new development. This is not just a question of whether we should grow, but how we should grow. We need to build housing where it makes sense in existing 15-minute and walkable neighborhoods. According to WalkScore.com, the Alpine Balsam neighborhood has a walk score of 88 out of 100, which is 30 points higher than the citywide average of 58. I'm fortunate enough to live in this area, and I do not own a car. I could not manage this if I lived in many other areas of Boulder. For these reasons and many others, Alpine Balsam is a perfect opportunity to enhance an existing walkable neighborhood. Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So actually, I have two questions for you. I live in the Whittier neighborhood as well, so I appreciate the walkability and so on of that. I was curious why your organizations chose Boulder to look at. So we're 107,000 people. We have probably the best affordable housing program in the state, maybe outside of Aspen. I looked down the road to Denver. Denver has the same population density we do, but seven times the population. So why was it that your organizations chose to focus on Boulder rather than Denver, when you would have had seven times the impact and there's a much deeper need for an affordable housing program? So if you wouldn't mind speaking to that.
Yeah, that's a good question. So this Growing Green report was actually the second. The first one was done in Austin, Texas. Second one was in Boulder. We are planning to do others. I'd love to do one in the Denver metro area. Like I said, this applies to every city across the country. Land use is a really important climate strategy. I think we see Boulder as an opportunity, because it's already a walkable community, and so adding strategic density in certain neighborhood centers along transit corridors could really reduce pollution, so.
So address the Denver component, please, because Denver has about the same density, but not nearly the same affordability. And so could you explain why not Denver? Why didn't you start with Denver, since it would have had a much higher impact and would have been probably about as easy to do?
Yeah, I'd love to do Denver next. Yeah.
Next. And I've got one more question, Lisa. There was a report by one of the reporters here tonight that quoted, didn't have a quote, so I can't quote it, but paraphrased an answer that somebody gave to the question, "Did the timing of the report's release have anything to do with the elections?" And so I would like you to address whether the timing of the report's release has something to do with Boulder's elections.
We view this as a major issue that's ongoing. We'll be talking about it this week, next week, next month, after the election, next year. I don't think it's going anywhere. The climate crisis is real. It's here. Every strategy, every tool, we have our disposal, we need to use.
I didn't say it was, you weren't gonna talk, I have one more. So again, a direct answer to the question, was it released intentionally to have an influence on the elections in Boulder?
No. We don't mention the election, the candidates.
Not inside, you don't, but the timing is different than what's mentioned in the reports.
To me, it's about the issues. And I want everyone here to care about it. I want everyone here to care about it. I want all the candidates and the election to care about it.
So I also looked at your report, and I'm curious why you didn't mention any affordable housing in there.
I would have liked to, but this report specifically focused on the environmental benefits. I think that would have been a much longer report.
But it didn't even address air quality, so.
It did address air quality.
I don't know about that.
Yeah. There's a correlation between compact development and reduced number of high-ozone days, so that was in there.
Well, we have, as Sam just pointed out, we have higher, much higher density. I mean, we have the same density, but Denver is seven times larger than we are. I would suggest that our trips that aren't used by cars are probably much lower than Denver's. And. You guys, can we get to Alpine Balsam? Anyway, it's just, it is very interesting that your report was released three days before people signed up. I'll just make that comment. And I think Boulder has been doing a lot of things the right way for a long time. And I'll just point to the North Boulder Sub-Community Plan that we did over 25 years ago. You guys.
Yeah, so I just, I mean, I appreciate everyone who came here, and Mr. Fromer for coming here to talk to us about Alpine Balsam.
Yep.
And while he was involved with the report, that is not what we're talking about tonight. And I would appreciate if we could kind of stay focused. I feel like we're grilling him on something that's not about what we're talking about tonight.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Cool.
Thank you.
Ryan?
We wanted to honor Penfield Tate with our final, but his nephew had to leave, so if you can't talk about it, that's okay.
Oh, it just went away. Oh, I was gonna say, you can leave it up there.
If she wants us to do it, that's okay.
Okay. But you, sorry you didn't get to it, but you can leave it up there. And Ryan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So I'm Ryan Hill. I live in North Boulder, previously lived.
Can you do the mic, please?
Oh, I knew that was gonna happen. I previously lived in Newlands on Iris. I'd like to briefly express my support for those aspects of the proposed area plan that could reasonably enable an equitable, fiscally and socially responsible outcome for the taxpayers' investments on the site. In my view, this outcome depends on smaller parcels with a permeable layout that encourages pedestrian access, with human-scaled interior spaces for people to meet and linger. I also believe Boulder would benefit from appeals, from efforts to appeal to residents who live efficiently by allowing for housing models that bundle public transit options in lieu of presumed vehicle ownership. I think with Alpine Balsam, council has a privilege and responsibility to do what it can to produce equitable, scalable, repeatable template for addressing Boulder's pressing need for family-friendly, middle-income and permanently affordable housing. I think Boulder should encourage plans that provide a variety of commingled housing options and bring residents together as a community. And we should give creative people a fair chance to present, defend their ideas without honors constraints of an overly restrictive area plan. I'd also like to express my support for the recommendations of the planning board, including light and non-residential opportunities on the western block. And so I'm urging you to consider the least restrictive area plan possible that keeps human-scale designs on the table. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Steven Rosenblum. Steven here? Okay, how about Jeff Kahoon? Okay. Steve LeBlanc. And then Margaret LaComte.
Good evening. Steve LeBlanc, 443 Alpine Avenue. I'm also part-owner at the Ideal Market and North Broadway Shopping Center. I'm here to support the staff plan for housing at Alpine Balsam and appreciate their hard work. It's been four and a half years since this project started, and I've been to. It's been four and a half years since this project started, and I've been to well over a dozen community, well-publicized meetings and workshops, and I'll probably go to another dozen, but I want to address a few points tonight, because cars and parking have been mentioned quite a bit. I think that the parking district plan is excellent, and maybe preference could be given to residents that don't need to have one or two cars, that that could be a preference way of obtaining. But one thing that is really important in being involved at the shopping centers is we have a crisis for employees right now. I've heard a lot about petitions and talking to different people. Well, I talked to all the different employees, and every single one of them said, "I would love to live there. I would love to live in Boulder." Right now, I drive in from Longmont, Westminster, Superior, all these different communities. The ironic thing is, they work here, and they can't vote here because they don't live here. If we want to, if we really love the Ideal Market and all the shops, let's help them to have a good supply of employees that live in the neighborhood and that, right now, they're driving in anyways. So if they live in Boulder, that's gonna take maybe 100, 200, 250 cars off the road. So my last question is, I hear people say I support affordable housing. If not here, where? Thank you very much.
Sir, we have a question for you.
Oh, sure.
Hey, Steve, thanks for coming out. We were talking, I don't know if you were in the room before, we were talking about the area plan.
Yes, I was downstairs.
Yeah, outside of the city site. We were talking about changing the land use designation for your property at Community Plaza. Is that something you're requesting the change from BC to MU?
No, but actually, currently, the zoning would allow for residential on top of the businesses, but that's never, in fact, I just, there's been a lot of, in fact, I was at Ideal the other day, and I heard somebody say, "Oh, don't get too used to Ideal because it's gonna be torn down." I was like, whoa, where did this come from? I just signed it, I've got a 12- and a 14-year lease in place.
But you're not just because, you're not seeking a change in land use designation?
Absolutely not.
Okay, thanks.
Can I have a follow-up as well? Would you object to the change in land use designation the staff has proposed from community business to mixed-use? It wouldn't change underlying zoning. The underlying zoning would remain BC2, but do you have an opinion about whether, if it were changed to mixed-use, that would be problematic for you?
Well, it's mixed-use BC2 now, but I don't really.
It's community business for the land use, and then for, it's BC2 for the zoning. And so your, the land use change would not affect your zoning in the short term?
It would just, you know, actually, I probably don't understand that fully. I thought maybe it was just coming up with a, an idea for the future, that if we were to redevelop 15, 20 years down the road, that there might be some encouragement to continue core development. The retail will always be there. That's a non-question.
Okay, thank you.
Great, hey, thank you. Margaret, and then Karen Simmons.
Good evening. I don't live in Alpine Balsam, I live in South Boulder, but most of my friends live up in North Boulder or in Alpine Balsam, and all of my doctors are at the Boulder Medical Center. I'm also a Boulder taxpayer. I oppose the Alpine Balsam area plan because this project is emblematic of the poor planning that seems to have afflicted Boulder. I don't want to pay for another blue-sky, ill-conceived project. So far, no Alpine Balsam plans, and there have been a lot of them, seem to be based on concrete planning, systematic data gathering, hard evidence, or solid cost estimates. None consider their future and adverse consequences for the immediate neighborhood for North Boulder or the entire city. They're just another set of those free, data-free concepts the city seems to like so much. And I'm astonished, as usual, that they were imposed by the city officials on a healthy neighborhood with little authentic community participation. A few of the problems. First is traffic. Boulder is already gridlocked. Increasing density in Alpine Balsam will aggregate traffic, and how much has not been studied. I don't want to have to navigate the equivalent of a traffic blood clot on Broadway every time I go to my doctor's office or my friend's houses. Second, loss of a thriving and vibrant business community that I love to visit. The shops, service establishments, and restaurants do not redevelop, need redevelopment. Don't try to fix something that's not broken. Third is damage to a close-knit community of mostly small houses. This neighborhood doesn't need UPHS, the lots are small. It has income diversity as much as exists in Boulder. It could use some affordable and rent-capped housing, but not in the densities that overwhelm it. Boulder taxpayers shouldn't be asked to pay for a project with no coherent plan. Once a real plan emerges, taxpayers should have an opportunity to vote on it. Right now, Alpine Balsam is like a train wreck about to happen. The train is speeding forward, the engineer is asleep at the switch, and the automatic brakes are broken, and no one in the city is planning to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen, and then Elizabeth Prentice.
Karen Simmons, 9th and Delwood. When the city council passed the Junction Housing Plan, you were creating a new neighborhood in an old auto retailer portion of 30th Street. Today, the Junction is a vibrant, modern complex of four-story apartment buildings centered around the railroad depot. One thing that makes it work so well is its access to the bus and two major multi-lane thoroughfares, 30th and 47th Streets. Likewise, at Holiday Neighborhood, centered around the fondly-loved Holiday Drive-In, is a neighborhood of moderately-zoned housing. Holiday, too, has the bus and two major thoroughfares that allow its residents good access to where they need to go in a timely manner. Conversely, Newlands is a century-old neighborhood. In the 1920s, Mr. Lashley gave the property where North Boulder Park now exists to provide a playground for the children living in the area. So Newlands has its longstanding neighborhood heritage also. But unfortunately, Newlands has just one major thoroughfare, Broadway. At least we have the bus. With the hospital gone now, there's an opportunity for an update. Yes, it will need some new infrastructure to bring it to this century, especially transportation. It all has to do with the number of residences you want to put at Alpine Balsam. I think your plan will be too dense for the neighborhood, considering the lack of thoroughfare availability, and because of that congestion, you will need to go slowly to gauge how well the area is handling the density. So I hope that if you pass this plan, the future planners and city councils will be able to make the amended changes necessary for moderate density, traffic mitigation, and for safe bike, pedestrian use. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, and then Robin.
Hi, Council. Elizabeth Prentice, I live on 7th Street in Boulder. Thank you for your pointed questions about the area plan and for also expressing your concern about our beloved Community Plaza. I just wanted to share, I'm sort of pivoting with what I was gonna say. My husband texted me right before I got up that the Chair of the Planning Board had said that our group, our neighborhood, and Think Boulder had done such fear-mongering that we'd squandered our chance to help shape this project. And I'm just bringing that up because the vitriol has reached a level that feels like an impasse, and our neighborhood group, I just want to clarify, I think anger is, it's a frustration. I don't think we're obstructionist. We want to partner, we've invited the city to talk at various events, we've reached out to people outside of our neighborhood. And so my question sort of to Council is, what can we do to move this forward in a way that feels productive? Like, can we do a design oversight committee, excuse me, a neighbor, a neighborhood, I don't know, I don't have the right planning vernacular, but be involved in this sub-community plan as a, with neighborhood representatives, because it just, it feels like we're all shouting at each other, and we know there's gonna be a change, we want it to be compatible with the neighborhood, and we want it to be productive. But to hear from the planning board even, "You've squandered your chance," when we've been saying, "We support medium-density housing that's compatible with the neighborhood and affordable housing to boot." So I guess it's a question that I look for your guidance on. I think there are lots of people that would welcome that opportunity. I'm sorry, I'm almost over. You know, and our group, just to sort of clarify, has also reached out to the Housing Advisory Board. We've met with pro-housing density advocates. I'd love to find some commonality and shape this in a meaningful way.
Well, hey, thanks for that sentiment. When we get to the deliberations, we can chew on that.
Yeah.
We probably want to make sure everybody else gets to speak. That's not a simple question that you ask.
Yeah, no, I know.
But I appreciate you asking it, and we can include that in our discussion coming up.
Okay.
So I just wanted to thank you for your tone and your willingness to collaborate and just, yeah, your demeanor. I really appreciate that.
Well, you all have a tough job, and we all want to make the right choices, so I think we can do it.
It looks like we have a couple of questions for you.
Oh, yeah.
Bob?
Elizabeth, thanks for coming out.
Yes.
Sometimes, these offers have been made before, and sometimes they work and sometimes they don't.
Yeah.
And one thing that would be helpful for us to understand is, and I think your group is pretty well organized, and you've got leaders that can kind of speak for a lot of people, but it would be kind of important to know that, because sometimes you have a conversation with somebody, and you think you kind of strike a deal, and then you find out they don't speak for a lot of other people. So that would just be kind of important for us to understand if we're gonna have a sit-down.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I'm understanding.
Well, just, I want to make sure that, you know, if there's a discussion, I mean, you have a group of leaders that.
Oh, oh, sure. I mean, I think that within our own group, there's a diversity of opinion, so I'm not necessarily saying, oh, it's, like, Think Boulder has to have a seat at the table. I'm saying, people in the neighborhood want to have a seat at the table, and there's probably a variety of opinions within that.
Yeah.
Okay.
If that's fair.
So I guess I don't know what the Chair of the Planning Board actually said, because I wasn't there and haven't seen tape or heard it, but to the extent that people in the neighborhood heard that you had squandered your opportunity to continue to shape the plan, that's just not true.
It was posted on Nextdoor, Newlands. You know, there was a whole bunch of back and forth about the petition and.
I don't, I don't, you know, it doesn't really matter to me.
Yeah, yeah, sure. As long as that's not the case.
Except to the extent that everybody always has a chance to speak to Council regardless of your viewpoint, and we listen to what we hear.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we at Robin? What was that, Robin?
Elizabeth.
That was Elizabeth. Okay, is Robin here? Nope. Robin's gone. Okay, you.
I'm sorry, Mindy Mullins.
Mindy. Got you. It's past bedtime.
Yeah, we passed. I'm Mindy Mullins, I live on the corner of Balsam and 9th. I can't imagine anyone more directly as far as this plan is our house. I tell my kids every day to use your voice, so that's why we're here, two hours past bedtime, to make sure our voice gets heard. The only reason I'm here is because of them and the traffic. Two weeks ago, we walked across the street, and no one stopped, and it hadn't been for me leading them, it would have been a totally different outcome. That intersection at Balsam and 9th is so busy, always line up with traffic, people drag race through there, it's loud all night long. I just can't imagine the nightmare of adding this high-density housing to that intersection, and that's gonna get all the traffic. So I'm not against any of this change, we're not against any of this change, but some moderation would be fantastic. Our kids need to feel safe. I cannot even let them walk across the road because of the traffic at this point. I sit in my master bedroom every night, and that's all we hear is traffic up until about 11 o'clock at night. So from 5 till 11, adding all these different houses that absolutely need cars, it's crazy to think these people don't need cars. The high school's busting at the seams as far as the numbers, the local public schools are the same. So I just think this needs a much better thought process than just to jump on board with high-density housing and everything else that's been proposed. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Good night, girls.
Hi, my name is Andrea Meyer. I've been a resident of Newlands for 32 years, and I'm just here to reiterate some of the main points. I would like to urge a postponing of the final vote until there's more community engagement, as has been mentioned, to think about transportation, particularly because, like, Balsam as a road is inadequate for east-west, as an east-west corridor as it is currently. So I'd like to address the congestion issues, the stress of the high-density impact on the neighborhood, and just to address the congestion issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea? Oh, you were Andrea, God. I'm starting to lose it. Okay, Samantha? Samantha here? And then Madeline, after you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Madeline Fetch, and I live on Balsam, about a block and a half from the site. I love my neighborhood and so much about it. I have also been to many of the events, open houses, and workshops for the Alpine Balsam site. I'm blown away by how many members of my neighborhood have been able to give their input and feedback throughout. We are fortunate to have such a collaborative and solution-finding process. In the summary document, I completely agree that this is an ideal location to add density in order to address critical housing needs in an innovative and attractive way. We can and will preserve the many good parts of our neighborhood by using the Alpine Balsam area plan to enhance these positives, prioritizing significant amounts of affordable housing, creating a hub for civic uses, and boosting use of the local businesses. We can put our money where our mouth is, we care about the environment, and we want others to have the high quality of life that we enjoy. I ask you not to discount the articulate and thoughtful input that many, many people put into coming to the workshops held over the last four years. Certainly, many more people than spoke tonight. All of us who participate in creating this area plan did so in good faith and understand that solution-seeking is the way forward, not fist-pounding and yelling. I hope you, as our council members, can see through this plan with its strong benefits at this excellent location. It is a gem. Stronger support for the local businesses, an opportunity to encourage a walk-bike-bus lifestyle like many of us here choose to live, and improving our environmental record by decreasing car miles traveled, building housing in the city that has everything except housing. Let's make the best choice based on facts, not fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline?
Sam Lay.
I'm just tired, okay. Come on up, Sam. Why do I, I'm always one behind. Okay.
We're right there with you.
Yep, okay.
Hey, so, thank you, Council. Sam Lay, I live at 13th and Balsam right now, but I've actually also previously lived at 970 North, which was one of the buildings identified in the historic section of the current area plan. And the two places I've lived in the area have been what would now be described as either medium-density residential HDR1 or maybe borderline HDR2, considering the current 970 North Street. And I love the neighborhood, not in spite of those high-density opportunities, but because of those high-density opportunities, it is the reason I was able to come to Boulder to help start a business in renewable energy, put some risk down, and have an affordable place to live, and then move up through the neighborhood as we managed to be successful. So I do work in the renewables industry, I have no stake in, financial stake in anything happening at all at Alpine Balsam, I know that's been a question recently. For climate action, that's one of my main points here, really, climate change really does require action, sometimes inconvenient action. City of Boulder is above-average on climate footprint for Boulder residents, largely because of transportation and housing are the two reasons that our climate impact is greater than average for the nation. And so plans that address those two factors are gonna have a great impact. Work done at Berkeley by Jones-Caman et al. in their Cool Climate Project at University of Berkeley, found that high-density can improve climate footprint, but only when it's combined with improved transportation, access to housing and, you know, goods and services in addition to just the housing. Density on its own doesn't solve the problem. Density on its own doesn't solve the problem, density with services and with transportation improvements does. And that leads me to the fact that I think that the area plan does a good job of addressing these things. I've been attending the workshops over the last couple of years, many of them, as many as I could hit, getting off of work on time, and they do address the transportation and climate issues that are needed to make it a valuable effort, and we support the area plan as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. William? He left? Okay. Claudia? And then Lynn.
My name is Claudia Hanson-Theen. I live in the Holiday Neighborhood. Where I want to correct the record, we have 330 units, not the 93 that Deborah Yen mentioned. I love the central Boulder neighborhoods, but they were already unaffordable in 2007, when my husband started his career here. I appreciate those of you who have tried to dispel some of the misinformation that brought so many people here tonight. I think it's corrosive, and it's disrespectful to anyone in any position who has participated in this process in good faith. Time spent worrying about raising the Ideal Market or erecting Soviet-style apartment blocks on the former hospital site is time we're not spending talking about the rare opportunity that we have here to model a socially just and green future for Boulder. Though we often get lost in the weeds, we know that every one of our planning decisions should be addressing our housing crisis, growing inequality, and the intensifying global climate emergency. And we know in broad outlines how to apply the limited powers of local government to each of these. We need to diversify our housing stock, we need to adopt land-use patterns, and build transportation systems that reduce our dependence on cars, and we need to invest in a rich public realm and spaces that build community. The Alpine-Balsam area plan should guide development towards all of these goals, and the current draft does move cautiously in this direction. It is moderate. We should plan to preserve existing apartments and add more modest housing in this well-connected and amenity-rich part of town. We should plan for mixed-use development, which will boost housing potential and enhance the beloved neighborhood retail at Community Plaza. And we should use emerging best practices in transportation demand management to discourage driving in what will become an even more accessible and walkable neighborhood. The language of planning is rarely inspiring. It's easy to fear change, it's much harder to imagine the living, breathing, and inhabited places that can emerge from land-use maps, massing diagrams, and traffic counts. I think the sketches you saw that Jerry Shapens did earlier of an urban village are delightful, and they're the kind of vision that we need here. We can build inclusive, livable, and lovable places, but not from a place of fear. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Lynn? And then Evan.
Lynn, Mountain Heights. There's a climate emergency. I don't like to have to say this stuff all over again to you all the time, but the hospital needs to stay, the pavilion is staying, you can't tell the difference between them when you try to look, walk the site. They're integrated, it's a great building. The city should go into the hospital, and the housing should go into the pavilion. And there was just a speculation move made at Marpa House, where the property value went up from 4.2 to 4.9 million dollars, because a developer swooped in thinking that, you know, it was going to be demolished, and planning 16 units out of a 40, you know, 16 units, three bedrooms, out of 40 people living in that space. Now, you want to talk efficient housing, Marpa House is it. You want to talk about kind, great people. I just was up there last night and talking to them, and they have, it's absolutely antithetical in Boulder to let something like Marpa House go away. The history of that, the model of community, the ease of energy efficiency, you know, what are you going to do? Tear that apart and put in fixtures for each individual person when you've got 40 people? You've got cubbies in the bathrooms, you've got the space being ultimately used, you've got parking, no problem. People know each other, and they share cars naturally. Put about five of those where the parking pad is, put the city into the hospital, and put some more housing, and maybe some more Marpa housing, Marpa House-type housing into the pavilion, and call it quits. You know, we just, we have to have true 15-minute neighborhoods. This is not 15-minute neighborhood that we have now in all of these area plans. We need real 15, we need to buy up houses in individual places where people can really walk in.
Thanks, Lynn.
And do that first, then do this.
Thank you.
Delay.
Lynn.
I live right on the razor's edge of the Alpine-Balsam area. But speaking more generally, if Boulder continues in the direction it's been going for the 41 years I've lived here, we will fulfill Niwot's curse and destroy this beautiful valley. But there are a couple of new things we could do if we got out of our silos and boxes and acronyms and master plans. And one of them, we already did. I spearheaded getting council to allow electric bikes on the paths, and now, six years later, I see them exploding. I'm happy to see that probably a majority of them are cargo-electric bikes, and I see whole families with, you know, one parent and a couple of kids, and the groceries, all on a cargo-electric bike. And the other thing I think that you could do that would be new is, instead of hoping that people wouldn't own cars with the .8 parking spaces per unit, is to establish or incentivize developments where people sign covenants that they will not own cars. And there are thousands of people like me in town already who would love to live in a place that instead of having a sea of parking, had a bunch of gardens and trees, and/or that we could spend less money. And you could attract that kind of people into town, instead of the people that you brought in with earlier experiments with density, where each place along canyon has a $40,000 underground parking spot. None of these people take the bus. Thanks.
Thank you, Evan. Will?
Thank you. Will Tour, 3032 10th Street. And I'm here tonight speaking not in my professional capacity, but as a Boulder resident. And I want to encourage you to really look at the options for Alpine-Balsam that will maximize the amount of housing that we can bring to our community. Really, two reasons for that. One are the obvious climate and energy benefits. Boulder is a national leader on energy and climate policy, and in order to live up to sort of our reputation and our values, really tackling the housing crisis in Boulder, I think is essential. But I'd like to spend most of my time speaking more from the heart as a neighbor of this site. This month marks 20 years that I've lived in the Newlands neighborhood, a couple blocks from that site. When my younger child was born, we walked down to the hospital to have the baby, and walked back with me, carrying the baby in my arms. So that site has been very important to me over the years. But during the time that I've lived in Newlands, I've been watching our neighborhood change. When I first lived there, there was a single mother next door who managed to get by through doing daycare. There's no way she could live in that neighborhood anymore. What I've seen is we're losing our economic diversity, there's no way that young people can come into our neighborhood. I love my neighbors, I love my new neighbors, but I don't want my neighbors to only be the ultra-wealthy going forward. And I think the best thing that we could do for our neighborhood would be to bring a significant amount of housing into the neighborhood that would allow just more different types of people to continue to live in our neighborhood. So thank you very much, and good luck making the decisions.
Thank you, Will. Macon Coles.
Hello, everybody. My name's Macon Coles. I live at 1726 Mapleton Avenue. So you've got a hard job here, but I want to speak in support of the plan. I think it's well thought out. I guess my back gets up a little bit when I hear people say that it's not data-driven, there hasn't been enough thought to, not enough outreach. Because with respect to Alpine-Balsam and our housing issue, I've been attending meetings for six years on housing, and four or five years on the Alpine-Balsam site. And I guess my, if I have one disappointment, it is that we're not pushing density enough on that site, housing density, because when we purchased it in 2015, it was on the heels of hearing from neighborhoods all over Boulder who were crying out for more housing. But everybody also, they are all consistent that they don't want the housing put next to them, or as part of their single-family neighborhood. This was a community investment that everybody in Boulder is paying for. And so the outcome should not be determined just by the immediately adjacent neighborhoods. I'm in one such neighborhood in Whittier, but really, this is an opportunity to do something really special. And I think you're moving in the right direction with it. What we're hearing from the people immediately impacted are legitimate concerns, but we hear those in every single project, wherever it comes up in Boulder. And it's, we've got a goal of 3,500 housing units in the middle-income housing strategy by 2030. How are we going to get there? We need to really push the envelope on this and make it a special place, but let's make it a place where a lot of people can live. Thank you.
Thank you, Macon. John? And then Eric Budd. Oh, is John not here? Okay.
Hello, Eric Budd. I live at Ingram Cooperative. And I mention that because the previous eight years, I lived on Broadway, just a couple blocks from the Alpine-Balsam site. And the chance to start a new housing cooperative in Boulder was just incredible. And so that's the reason that I moved out of my condo that I lived, you know, ever since I'd been in Boulder. And there's obviously a lot of things that I miss. I feel like, living in the edge of Martin Akers, I feel like I'm in the suburbs now. And I really liked being a seven-minute walk from Ideal Market, I really liked being a six-minute bike ride to downtown, or being able to hop on the bus. Where I lived, the bus was 50 feet from my front door. And my question for you all is, how can we provide these great opportunities for people in our city, people who work in our city, and do it at the same time while living out our values, you know, making sure that, as the city owns this property, we're going to do this development sustainably? That includes the buildings, as well as the transportation. Makes a great place for people. I would love to live at this proposed site. It's very walkable, it's a place with community. North Boulder Park is amazing. And right now, what we've got is an empty hospital. And so as the leaders of our city, I just want you all to be able to dream bigger and think about how we can continue to live out our values and continue to make our city better. So I support the plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. And that's it. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you for everybody taking the time to come down. It is 11:05. We need a motion to continue the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Well, let's at least continue the meeting enough to figure out what we're going to do. Is that fair? All those in favor of continuing the meeting to discuss whether we should continue the meeting? Okay. Okay, so we have a lot of questions that you're hoping that we're going to answer, and it's a late hour to begin answering them.
It is, and as your paper agenda reflects, to make sure that we're addressing both of the items that were presented tonight. The first question was really also to make sure that we gather the feedback about the pavilion renovation.
You have to speak up. You have to talk louder.
We're going to, we'd like to make sure that we capture the feedback around the pavilion renovation and city facilities, and that might be, that's the first one under the council discussion.
Okay, well, I guess the question before the question is, are people ready to dive in, or, hey, would you like to do this tomorrow after vaping? I don't know. I don't know.
I kind of, I kind of do.
Do you dive in?
No, 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 to do it tomorrow. I mean, I hate to say this, and all these people have been here forever, but we have an hour and a half of discussion, two hours of discussion. You know, tomorrow night's pegged for three hours. We don't have any public testimony tomorrow night.
I would agree with that.
I agree with that. I've been, I'm under the weather, and so I just, I need to go home. And I, but I'd like to be part of this discussion, I just need to go back to bed. Okay. So Mirabai's probably got an issue, I'm guessing.
Well, I mean, yes and no, I guess. It depends on, I mean, we're missing Cindy tonight, and I know that Cindy and I sit on the same thought wave, and so now we're just swapping it out. And so I guess the question is, if we're moving forward with something, I understand this isn't a vote, but it could be a nod of five.
Well, it'll be direction.
So you're right, so, and so the point being that...
Is Cindy going to be here tomorrow?
I don't know. I thought so.
Does anybody happen to know?
So the point is, I think if...
I don't, do we have our schedules or something?
So she wasn't supposed to not be here tonight from the previous schedules. So this was, I think her note today was just like, she's not feeling well, or had something come up, but the, from our plan, so...
She's supposed to be here. Okay, keep going.
So I guess, I mean, what I'm trying to say is, from my gatherings, there might be four of us in one's idea, and four in another idea, and if that's the case, then, you know, not being here is going to change the course of how this moves, so.
So will you not be here tomorrow night?
No.
No.
So there's no vote that's coming from this. This is essentially like a study session with public...
But it's direction, and so direction is still a nod of five, is that not correct?
Well, there will be a, potentially, a vote when it comes back to us on the 24th. Is that right, 24th?
No, it's October 1.
September 1.
October, right, so our hearing, so we have one more hearing with the Planning Board on the 24th, and then we will make a decision October 1st.
So can I just ask a question to the staff on the direction you want, and if you get that direction tonight, tomorrow, or October 1st, or, I mean, yeah, October 1st, what, how does that affect your work plan?
So our intention was to, similar to the Planning Board, when they walked through these questions, as members provided their feedback, we kind of asked for a thumbs up, straw poll, nods of heads, to understand if there was, you know, what level of support amongst the whole board were those recommendations, so that we could, and we reflected that in the feedback to you in the memo. It will help us to be able to take all of those pieces, it's the direction to change what you see in the draft plan, so that we can come back for that public hearing with something that you, hopefully, was in intent to adopt.
Good. Other thoughts? Good.
I have a question or confusion. So you got some feedback already from Planning Board, you would get feedback from us at some point in time. You have another public hearing? Like, what's the purpose of the second public hearing? Like, are we going to hear different things from different members of the community, or what's the purpose of the second public hearing?
The second public hearing is the public hearing associated with adoption. The purpose of the public hearing tonight was to hear from the public, and then get the council's initial reaction to the plan, so that you could provide direction with, to staff on how you would like to see the plan come back when you actually do your adoption process later this fall.
Okay. I feel a little uncomfortable having council members, it sounds like you're looking for thumbs up and thumbs down. I think you might be surprised if you do that without council members here, and then October 1, find out that people who were not present to give you the thumb thing have a different point of view, so that might be a waste of a lot of people's time.
But the other thing is, maybe we could also get... But the other thing is, maybe we could also get, somebody can sit down and get your opinions on these things. If that, or you...
If they are taken, I'm more than happy with that, but they would have to be counted if I'm not here, but if they're not...
You can do that.
So, I assume that they would be, because again, this is like a study session, right? And so, when people write in at study sessions, their, their kind of input goes noted. And so, I think I would know how to interpret Cindy's input from today, probably same with yours. So, we can count those as thumbs-down.
And so, if it's counted, then I'm comfortable with it, but if it wasn't...
Will you have time to tell us your thoughts?
Yes.
Okay.
Tomorrow.
Yeah. I mean, I'm wondering, you know, you guys have created this list, which I think is really helpful in getting our thoughts organized. I'm wondering if we could just send these in? I don't know. I mean, that would preclude a discussion, but it would give you guys, you know, an idea of where we're at. Well, I guess, could I propose that we do it tomorrow night? I think I would benefit from the discussion with you guys.
Okay.
And then, as long as we get your input.
If Mirabai is okay and can...
Yeah. They're kind of open-ended questions, so if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, why don't we go ahead and do that, and we will tack it on after that, when we finish dealing with tobacco and vaping tomorrow night? Does that sound good?
Sounds great.
Yeah, just, although with apologies to all the folks who are still here, but we're going to do a better decision-making process if we hold off until...
Right. And I'll just remind people in the audience that you can stream this discussion or you can watch it on Channel 8. So, you don't have to be here to know what the discussion is and what we're doing.
Yeah, you can watch it.
But I appreciate you all being here.
Yeah, this has been very helpful.
Ken, I'm...
Oh, wait, go ahead.
I'm just, in the interest of our, we have Bill Fox here, the consultant for Fox Turtles Hernandez, and I'm not sure if he can be here tomorrow. So, I'm wondering if there are questions about that that we can either get or get sometime during the day tomorrow so that we can get those addressed for you.
If we have transportation...
In terms of number of trips and...
If we have transportation-related questions...
Maybe the access and mobility or traffic study type...
We should get them to you tomorrow.
That would be helpful. Would have been useful to know. Okay. It's too late to start that tonight. I didn't realize that was the case.
Staff and consultants can be available tomorrow.
Okay. So, you're asking for us to send in questions tomorrow? Because we're not going to do that right now.
No, that's fine. I think that, because I don't know who will be able to be available to be here to answer questions, should we have them? If there are burning questions, if you guys can get those to me, we can do, try to do a better job of answering them.
I mean, I think that's a fair request. If you have questions specific to the staff who are here or the traffic, try and get them in.
By when?
By noon?
So, or earlier?
Yeah, noon or earlier.
Okay. So, could that also include, some people came up with ideas of renurs and stuff and asking Fox Turtles, you know, I don't know if they have those kinds of proposals? Okay.
But I think, I think if there are questions, if you can get them to us ahead, we can try to do a better job of answering them.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, good.
What goes first tomorrow night?
Vaping.
Okay.
Well, could we just continue the meeting? I just think vaping's a little easier, I hate to say.
So, the only...
Then, I just think this is a more complicated discussion. I think we would benefit from having a nice, fresh, crisp discussion earlier in the meeting and, well...
The only thing, all the people who care about vaping are expecting that to start at 6 o'clock tomorrow night, and there are a lot of people who care about it.
Yeah, I'm not saying there aren't. I get the same emails that you do.
Of course we all do.
I hear what, I hear what you're saying, Lisa, but rather than disrupt two meetings, let's...
Okay.
Stick the ban, and we'll try to be efficient with the one so we can tackle this by 7:30 or something.
Yeah. I mean, if we could keep it to an hour and a half, that, that would be great.
Oh, boy. Okay. Thank you all for being here and for giving us your input, both on the email and in person. And with that, we're going to adjourn.
So, what time do you want us?
After vaping.
After vaping. We're not vaping.
We're not.
Vaping's getting up till 7:30.